Okay, welcome everybody to our agenda special council meeting of Tuesday, January the 24th. And what we're going to do here before we get started, we're going to look to go in camera. We're going to go in committee room one to discuss some in camera items that we cannot discuss in public. And then we're going to come back out in open session and we're going to discuss the budget. We're going to have a series of presentations where council will be able to have dialogue and deliberate and ask questions and do all the things we need to do to deal with this budget. So first order of business is going in camera, so I'm looking for a resolution to do just that. Motion by Councilor Patel, second by Councilor Thompson. If there's no questions to the motion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that is approved, so we're going to go in camera now committee room one. And then we will come back and resume afterward with the regular scheduled budget meeting. And I will be passing the chair over at that time to Councilor Peter Angelo, our budget chair. All right, we'll see everybody in camera.
Okay, welcome back to the regular scheduled city council budget meeting. We just came from in camera where we had some discussions and deliberations and now we're going to resume in open council. So just before we do, there's a few orders of business that will follow through on first being the singing of Oh Canada. So we do have a recorded version and I will read the introduction before I ask you to stand. Today singing Oh Canada, excuse me, will be Anthony and Julia Skorinji, brother and sister duo. Anthony is a city employee since 2014 in our finance department. He began his music studies at the age of four and achieved Royal Conservatory Level 10 piano. He accompanies the Queenston Women's Chorus and the Niagara Men's Chorus and is the pianist for St. Patrick's Church. His sister Julia is a vocalist and has been singing for 20 years. She's classically trained and was a member of the Niagara Star Singers in her youth. She is since a graduate of Brock's Dramatic Arts Program and Humboldt Performing Arts Program. She's performed at Blue Jay Games and at Disney World. This afternoon, Julia and Anthony will perform Oh Canada for us in open city council. So I would ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Well, that's better than brothers and sisters fighting. Well done to the Skorinji brother and sister, Anthony and Julia. Well done. Beautiful, very professional. Yeah, my family won't be singing here either. So next up is our land acknowledgement and traditional Indigenous meeting opening. I'd like to invite Chief R. Stacy LaForme, chief of the Mississaugas of the Credit, to share his testimony as we acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who are stewards of this land for millennia before us. We're grateful together for the land we share.
Andy, Chief R. Stacy LaForme, Mississaugas of the Credit. I'd like to acknowledge the creator, the world around us, and our place within it. I acknowledge the many nations that walked this land in the past, the many nations that walk it today, and welcome you to the treaty lands of the Mississaugas of Inishnaab Bay. The treaties with the Mississaugas are the Niagara Treaty of 1781 and the Between the Lakes Treaty of 1792. I would also like to acknowledge the Treaty of 1764 that recognized the Royal Power Commission of 1763, which set a new relationship between the Indigenous people and the Crown. Chief LaForme, one P.
Thank you, Chief LaForme. So next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes from our January the 17th council meeting. Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. If there's no discussion of the minutes, we'll call the vote all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. I would like to acknowledge the passing of Francis Patterson, the father of Ruth Ann Uesteg, one of our city councillors here. So we extend our condolences to the, to the families. Next up is disclosures of a pecuniary interest. Do we have any disclosures of council? Okay, seeing none, I will now switch seats with Counselor Peter Angelo, who is our budget chair. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor Strange.
Mr. Mayor, before you switch chairs, I'd just like to make a point. You know, there's been in the last couple of meetings and going through budget, budgetary, all the files, everything like that, and different departments. There's been a lot of information shared in the past number of weeks and more information shared tonight on this budget. I'll be asking for some budget changes to be considered tonight, and I'm sure other counselors as well. We're trying to shave, shave some numbers here. Due to the import, due to the importance of the budget on the city, I'll ask that the changes agreed upon tonight can come back to this council for final approval next week if possible. This will ensure that staff and council have enough time to absorb and fully understand these changes prior to final approval. I believe this extra time will lead to a better budget. And we have a few new counselors on and just one, they're just getting their feet wet. We have one counselor that can't be here under certain circumstances of her dad passing away. And I found, you know, eight years ago when I was, when I was here and, and in budget process, I was just, it was all over the place. It's so much time to take in. So I would really like to have another week if possible, even for final approval of the budget if possible. So I'd suggest the following motion. The council set another special council meeting for final presentation approval of the 2023 operating budget next Tuesday on January 31st, 2023.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Yes, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Just before we call the vote, is there any discussion and can we check with staff if that can work? Yes, Counselor Patel.
I would suggest that can we keep the date open?
Microphone.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that can we keep the date open, not just do the next Tuesday? Because I'm sure if it's a special meeting, we don't have to do it on Tuesday, do we?
No, we don't have to. No.
So how about we just leave the date open?
Well, what he's suggesting is we're gonna, we're gonna continue this to the next Tuesday.
Okay. And if we can't do the next Tuesday, we can do it some other time.
Well, then there's a council that went after, but we might pick a different day other than a Tuesday. Yeah.
Are you asking?
Yeah. So sorry, our staff are just making sure that we're on site. Mr. CIO, did you want to weigh in before we call the vote?
Sure, discussion with the clerk. You can choose to confirm all the budget stuff at a subsequent meeting. That meeting, we would suggest be a special meeting, so that would be the only thing on the agenda, no different than today's a special meeting. And that therefore it's governed by the rules of a, of a specially called meeting versus a regular council meeting.
Okay, okay, bro. You're good with that?
Yep.
Counselor? Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote all those in favor. Okay, and that's, oh, I'm sorry. Tony Baldinelli's got his hand up. I'm sorry, I just saw your hand, Tony. Did you have something to say? You're muted.
Oh, no, I'm raising my hand to agree, in agreement.
Okay, there's actually a button you can push to vote in favor. It's a checkbox or something, but that's okay. That's okay. You're in favor. So all in, we're all in favor. That's unanimous. And that emotion included the date with next Tuesday, January the 31st?
Is Tony gonna be home?
Will Tony be, well, I hope he's available. I don't, you just shut his camera off when you said go through.
Yes, I will.
Okay, good. Okay, so I'm gonna switch seats with Counselor Peter Angelo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Presentations, the first one that we have is 5.1, deals with the 2023 parking budget. And I know that we have Ms. Clark and Mr. Brown with us today that are gonna start off with the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna start off and I'll let Paul close it up at the end. So this is our 2023 parking budget for council. We did want to highlight for council, we are still feeling some pressures. So as you know, the 2022 budget was not in a surplus position. We needed to use 421,000 of tax levy money to balance that budget. This budget's a little better. It's only using $237,000 of tax levy funds, but still not in a surplus position. And that is due to some of these pressures we've got here on the screen. So of course with COVID, there's an increase in work at home arrangements, an increase in online business. And we're just estimating the demand overall to be about 80% of pre-pandemic levels. In addition, we had the reduction of parking spaces. The exchange construction is, is blocking some of our parking spots. And we had a change in use at Lot 10 for social housing. Some opportunities, we've got the new casinos, so we're hoping that will continue to bring us some additional revenue from parking and help offset our budget pressures. And we got a new lot, Lot 16 on Kitchener. Paul's team went out and, and put some Jersey, what are those called? The arms, Jersey Bears? And we're making revenue, charging permit revenue for the workers at the hospital. So that budget's been added and it results in an estimated surplus of $14,700 that's been added into this budget. Some future parking initiatives. So the Parking Strategic Plan is gonna help us guide future rate setting and advise on our rates that are gonna be required to help meet our capital needs as well as financial sustainability. So we can hopefully bring the parking budget back into a surplus position where it belongs. In addition, we're doing a downtown parking study, so we're reviewing current and future demands, hoping to optimize our parking rates in that area. And we're gonna explore some parking revenue opportunities for large events once Niagara Falls Exchange is up and running. So I just wanted to give council a view of the five-year history of parking, because although it's a deficit position now, it wasn't always the case. You can see over on the right side of the screen there in 2018, we had a small surplus, about $12,000. And then 2019 was a wonderful year for us. We had a surplus of 223,000. And then fast forward to 2020, COVID hit and we started rolling into the deficits. So the deficit of 410,000. Luckily, we got safe restart funds we were able to use to offset that deficit money. And then 2021, of course, was even worse, but we did get the safe restart funds. And 2022, we're not, obviously not done all of our final year end, but currently we're sitting at about a $155,000 deficit. And that is including bringing in about And that is including bringing in about $300,000 of tax levy funds. So this parking budget as compared to 2023 there, you can see the fines are about the same, permits being small increase, but the user fees, we are anticipating them to come back up based on the actuals of 2020, so we've increased that budget by about $125,000. As a result, we're able to drop the amount we had to bring in from special purpose reserves, that's SPR there, like I said, from $421,000 to $237,000. So it is a step in the right direction for the parking budget overall. And then on the expense side, they're relatively the same. Paul was able to shave off about $33,000 in expenses overall, and a lot of that comes from Lot 18. We no longer have to share revenues with the ministry. I'm not going to go over these next two slides in detail, but it's just a look at the parking budget by lot, so you can see which ones are in a surplus position. Those will be the ones without brackets, and then certain ones that are in a deficit position with brackets. So our here on Lot, for example, is in a deficit position. That's about it, actually. So that's good news for us. They're starting to trend in the right direction. The increase actually in parking control services there at the very bottom, the deficits increased from $85,000 to $169,000. That's an increase in our commissionaire's budget. And this is actually... Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you right here.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Okay, so last year, we were asked to start a student program with the... For the summer student program. We did initiate that program and ended up with three students that worked in the Clifton Hill area from May until September. The program costs roughly $30,000, and the students issued over 1,450 tickets in that timeframe for a revenue amount of $73,000. This is a very positive scenario. They're very active in the community. We got a lot of good feedback from the business owners in the area and very little disputes or conditions of dealing with the students. So it was a very, very great program. It did net us with a $43,000 positive. The students found it to be a very challenging role. It is a conflict-oriented role, of course, but the students were hired through colleges that are dealing with law and security and felt that the conflict resolution that they learned doing this was a really great learning aspect, and it actually helped them with their future goals. So it's a good news, positive there. We're going to go over a few ideas that we have for the 2023 budget that is above the base budget that we just presented, and some ideas that can help generate some additional revenue. So if we were to implement the eight recommendations, we would be looking at roughly a $125,000 increase to the standard amount we have now, knowing that some of these wouldn't be implemented right away or it's seasonally related. We're estimating around a 60% timeframe, so you're looking at about $75,000 in savings These ideas are, the downtown and the Main Street area have a tiered fine condition, so the average parking ticket is $25 for expired meter. But in these areas, in 2013, council implemented a lowered fine. It's currently at 15. So the recommendation is to eliminate that lowered fine and make it standard across the board as a standard parking fine, and that's for expired meters. The second one would be to increase parking fines by 10%. In 2021, council did approve the increase in our parking fines with an implementation in 2022 due to COVID reasons, so we did do that. And the recommendation was that we revisit this about every two years, so it is listed as there for some consideration as well. The third item would be the increase of parking permits by about 10%. Our parking permits have been very static since 2017, so we are looking at the increase of those permits. There has been a drop in the amount of permits due to working at home scenarios, so this would offset some of that. Now, as far as the increase, the summer flat rate for our parking lots, to try to climb back out of COVID, we went with a different direction for the tourist area. Instead of charging $3.50 an hour for a maximum of two hours, we went with a flat rate scenario in the Clifton Hill area where people can park at 9:00 in the morning and play a flat rate all day. It seemed to suit the scenario. We want people down there, we want them to stay. This seemed to be very positive, it was received really well, but especially our students and our public realized that we were still lower than what our competitors were. So the recommendation here is that we bring that amount up and sort of match some of our competitors on the weekday and weekend amounts. Number five is really looking at not waiving any of the parking fees. When organizations approach us and they want to use some of our parking facilities and they want 50, 60 cars in that parking facility, there's often a wave of those fees. This is a user-based and self-supporting sort of budget, so we're saying, instead of waiving that, that they work with us and we incorporate a cost for that. So that's what this recommendation is here. The sixth item is that, as said, the summer students were very successful. It was in the Clifton Hill area, and that we add another student to this and have them do the Falls View area. That would also help with the opening of the new theater in that area, plus the addition of new meters that we've put in that we haven't really fully been able to utilize due to COVID conditions. Number seven there, the On Street Falls View on Boulevard, there's a section of Falls View Boulevard that's fronting the casino shops. We believe that we can benefit from adding off-season parking here. So in reviewing of it, we would see that there wouldn't be any impact to the general flow of traffic in this area, but we could gain additional parking spaces and additional revenues that would just support the area a little better. In tying into that, we similarly do this on Victoria Avenue between Center and Ferry Street, and we remove the on-street parking during the summer season where it's quite busy, but in the off-season, we put the meters back in to basically support the locals to going into restaurants and doing those other things. We feel that based on the traffic patterns we've seen, instead of implementing them at Thanksgiving, we could probably do it at Labor Day and gain about two months of that revenue on-street and supporting that area in that way. So those are the recommendations we have to add to the 2023 budget, and I'll pass it back over to Chair Two. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brown. Does any members of council have any questions of either Ms. Clark or Mr. Brown? Yep, Councillor Campbell?
Just a quick question. With the American license plates, how many of those pay their fines at some time? Do you have a percentage or anything like that?
Through the chair, the payment of American plates is actually quite high. It sits around 75%. That being said, we do actually have the ability to get owner information and collections on the American side with 47 states. So we do have that opportunity already.
Okay, I have Mayor DiO'Daddi.
Thank you, Chair. So a couple of questions. I really like your business approach, where your change in timelines and, as you mentioned, after Labor Day, because even I noticed on Center Street, after Labor Day, it just gets quieter. You know, it's not like it is during the summer, for sure. So a couple of questions I have through you, Chair, is number one is, now Ellen, which is, I think, one of our gold area lots, down 0.78%. I just wondered if you had any insight into that or why you think that one might have been down through you, Chair?
Oh, yeah. Generally, I believe it was down initially because we're trying to deal with the competitors of new lots put in, and it is sort of a quick... The lots we contend with have manned people waving signs. Their rates can fluctuate, starts at $5. As they start to fill, it goes to $7 and $10. We did find a lot of our issue was poaching from those private lots. So from there, that's what our next idea was, to match that with a flat rate. We've also gone to signs that have QR codes on it, so somebody who shows up doesn't have to stand at the meter anymore. They can just hold their phone up to the QR code and they can do a one-time payment through Honk. We've seen a massive spike in the use of this. We actually went from about 7,000 transactions to 25,000 in this year alone, and those implementation of those signs and that method, I'm going to see that this lot is going to jump right back up. We're still limited to the number of spots we always have, of course.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you said in regard to some of the private lots where they hire, they've got guys in reflective vests with signs waving in, and they get pretty aggressive. So in that vein, I'd ask, what do we do about those? Sometimes they're out on the sidewalk and on the road directing people in on Bender Hill, on Ellen. They get pretty aggressive. And as a matter of fact, I've even been approached through you, Chair, where I was parked in the city lot and they came up and said, you know, we'll give you a buck cheaper if you come across the street. They're very... And I saw them tell people, get a refund, come across. Like, it's pretty aggressive. So my question is, are we doing anything to keep some eyes on those people that are, you know, breaking the local bylaws, stepping out into traffic, trying to get business?
Through the chair, yes. We're working with bylaw to look, make sure that they're meeting the conditions of their parking bylaw and their licensing agreement. The change of COVID did put a lot of that on hold, but we are now looking and moving forward and collaborating to try to make sure that they're not doing that kind of business activity. That is actually a very negative image on the city itself. So yes, we are working with them to do it.
Yeah, it is. It's cheesy, and it's unprofessional, and it's dangerous. You know, it's... I don't think it's the look and the feel of what we're looking for. Now, in this... And I'm sorry, I've got a few questions, because I have a lot of thoughts on this.
We have lots of time.
Okay. Well, obviously, you know, it's been said many times, you can't cut your way to prosperity, right? You have to grow it, and you have to be creative and innovative, and like a lot of the things you recommended here, which I really like. One of the other comments I had was, and I've said this before, I've mentioned this in the past, the alignment of our parking... I'm just going to pick on Ellen for a second, because that's one I... Because I like to go to Yanks, and so I use that lot a fair bit. And the parking stalls are, in my opinion, seem really big, and especially definitely they are compared to the private sector where they're a little bit tighter, you know? So my question is, have we looked at when we need to reline it? Maybe a reline of the parking lot, more geared toward revenue? I mean, it's kind of like, I like when I go to Costco, they've got those big spaces beside the cars when you have buggies, but we don't have that issue. And I just wondered, is there a way that we could take a look at realigning it to grab a few more spots over the days of summer, I think could add up? So I just throw that out through you, Chair, to the presenter.
Through the chair, yeah, absolutely. And I'm in fully support of what you're saying. Even the angle structure of it does seem to take away spots that what we have. There was a review that when the reconstruction was taking place in Victoria Avenue, phase three was Ellen Avenue, and it was then at that point decided that when we went through and did Ellen Avenue, that we would redo that lot and make it with a lot better synergies and selling aspects of that, not only bring it up to a better-looking lot, but also give us those aspects. And we are looking at that, and it is the primary revenue lot that we have, so it doesn't... It's not good to just leave it sitting the way it is. So we are looking at it. It's also one of the primary areas that we would look at adding some potential EV charging stations. So yes, it's not off the radar. It definitely should be something that has to be reviewed.
That's great. You took away my next question. It was about EV charging stations, because there's not enough. I mean, by 2035, you know, apparently we're not going to be making them anymore in Canada and a number of the US states, combustion engines. So I mean, we're going to need a lot more. Like, there's not nearly enough infrastructure for the traveling public with electric vehicles. So that's great. So you're already on that one. And then last two questions at this point, and I'll sit back down, is, one is dynamic pricing versus static pricing. So obviously, certain nights are much busier and you can charge a lot more. Like, I found New Year's Eve, most lots were around $75 for New Year's Eve, including, you know, some of the major places. And of course, everyone uses ours first, because we're cheaper, and then, once ours fill up, then everyone charges more. So I just wondered how active we are with dynamic pricing. And in that same vein, and you already drew attention to the new theater that's going to open up next month, the old G stage, it's going to bring a lot more people, and I think a lot more people looking for that on-street parking, especially given the fact we don't allow on Clifton Hill anymore. We knew how popular it was, and I think people realize through you, Chair, that when you get closer to the venue, you know you're going to pay more, you know, and if you want to walk more, well, you get a better price. So I'm just wondering, what can you say about that, about dynamic pricing?
Through the chair, actually, we do everything that you're describing. This year, normally, we would go with a $20 fly rate on New Year's Eve or on Canada Day. We went with a $25 fly rate. Again, to try to look up and match what we're doing. We find it necessary to not look at being that one that is so fluctuating that we are gouging the public, right? You still want that the rapport of the city is trustworthy and available to the public, right? Where we can put on our website that there's going to be a rate that they can trust when they're coming down here. So that's the first thing we try to work with. But we do use that dynamic rate structure. We've just gone through our New Year's, and we went into our... This is our down season, so our rates in the Clifton Hill area is $5 flat rate from 8:00 in the morning till midnight, and that's money, like, actually, seven days a week at this point, because we want the people to get down there. We want that activities to happen, right? We find that we'll get more revenue by people coming down and just using the time they need at a very short revenue time without stressing about it and having that natural turnover than nickel and diming for every little thing. So we're using that. Around the theater is quite similar. The closer to the theater you are, the on-street parking at this point, it's set as $20 for six hours of parking. And on the weekends, actually, it's $20 for the entire day, but on weekends, it's for six hours, because we anticipate that they can do two shows. So there would be an afternoon, a matinee show, and an evening show. As you push further out and you start moving toward Main Street on that, then the rates come down, they're $10. So yes, if you're willing to walk, there's a cheaper rate for you. If you want something premium, the prices are a little higher closer to the venue. And in looking at dynamic grading, it's great to do, and it's easy to do when you're dealing with Honk and it, but a programmed machine on street is really hard to do on the fly. You basically would have to have it manned at all times, so we have to forecast what our plans are.
Thank you. And last comment to Chairs, I'm glad that we're going to have, or you're proposing to have one more person in the Falls View area for the opening of the new theater, because when it's been advertised that eventually they're going to get up to 200 shows a year and 5,000 seats, that's big. The other thing that happens in the city that I'm sure many people are aware of is they've got valet parking in the hotels, and some of the hotels charge a significant amount, like $75 and up. So what people are doing now is they'll park in one of the city lots and walk to their hotel. So that's something, I just throw it out there because it's another revenue source opportunity for us, that, you know, they're saying, hey, if we can save $50, you know, that'll pay for one of their meals. So I just want to make sure, and again, not to gouge anyone, just to be in the market, and especially, this is visitors, I mean, they should pay, they're here to visit town. You'd go to Toronto, and if you went to a Leafs game, you know what you're paying for your tickets. You know, if you're... Especially if you're playing Boston, right? There'll be a lot of people there paying a lot to watch them beat Boston. So anyway, I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have Councillor LaCoco and then Councillor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Brown, thank you for your presentation. I have two questions. Last year, we looked at having some patios on the streets, and we've removed parking, and then we also have a lot of street closures for events. What is the dollar amount of lost parking revenue for those items? I know those items are important in the sense that it's increasing business for some businesses and events, but how much lost revenue are we looking at when we do those?
Through the chair, it's different based on the locations you are. A lot of them, for example, in the downtown area, it's difficult to immediately quantify because we just recently added parking back in around 2018, 2019, and then a lot of those events happened, so we wouldn't really have a history of lost revenue prior to that, which made it difficult to understand. What we do look at is what a bank of parking spaces has and what their standard daily, weekly rate revenue would be, and then we can quantify based on what the length time of those patios would be. A lot of the patios that have gone in over the period of time often have more impact on road traffic than it does parking. But that's generally how we would look at it. We look at the area and the general cost of those spaces, and then we quantify that over the timeframe.
Okay, thank you. On the fee waiver that we get to close the street for an event, could the loss of revenue be in that fee waiver, just so we're aware?
Through the chair, that's kind of what I'm really hoping, that when we note about, you know, waiving fees and that, that it's pointed out there, and then we can look at how we can adjust that, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And one last question. I did email you, there were a few residents that had an idea about leasing operator rights for the parking lots, that the city doesn't do it, an operator does it, they take on the cost, as you said, the insurance. Could we have a report back about the feasibility? Would it work? Are there disadvantages? Are there advantages? Why would we do it? Why wouldn't we? I don't know if it's feasible, but those were some suggestions from residents.
Through the chair, yeah, we have no problems going ahead and reviewing that, see what the demand is. We would look at and say, our standard operational cost wouldn't vary, we'd still have to plow the lot, we would still paint the lot, we'd still clean up the garbages. It would then be the fact that we would look at a revenue sharing with that individual, they're going to man it with a person, and they're going to take a revenue amount. revenue amount. So then the question is, is there a profitable or manageable condition for the city that makes it worth their changes? So yes, we would definitely review that if you like.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Okay, I have Counselor Campbell.
Yes, I didn't know if this would be the time to bring it up or not, but the condition with my back is so bad that I've had to go out and get a handicap parking sticker. Not proud of that, but it was necessary. But what has come to my attention is with the aging population in our community, I'm talking about our residents, I think that we need to have another look at the amount of disabled parking spots that are available because personally it's very hard to find one. I don't know if that's part of our mandate or not.
Well, can I just ask, are these at city lots or on-street?
On-street, city lots, yeah.
Because there's a difference. I mean, if you're talking about private property, then we'd have to, then we'd have to look at the policies that we have.
Not private, just on-street.
Through the chair, we did update our bylaw, I believe it was two years ago, for inaccessible parking, which we then expanded the parking stalls and the, and the required amount per property. Some properties are grandfathered in and as they do development, they would have to update there, but we did update the bylaw to increase the number of required accessible spots. And we will continue to do so, as you said, based on the, the demand and need. It's similar as we do for EV charging. We would look at it and say, how do we best suit the public that we need?
Are there any other questions from council members of Mr. Brown or Ms. Clark? Mayor, question?
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion that we move the recommendations, Chair.
So I guess based on the previous motion that, that we have another, that we have another meeting to ratify decisions on January 31st, I would guess, and maybe I could ask our CAO whether or not I'm right, that we'll be approving everything tonight in principle.
Through the chair and I'll see if Bill doesn't ignore me, but I believe yes, we'll approve in principle. And then what we can do, because there are some additional recommendations here, we can go back and recalculate what those implications are to the budget so that next week we'll be presenting you the final numbers with all these recommendations included. So, but we'll take it as if there will be any changes. Council wants to change it next week, we'll change it on the fly.
Okay. So there are seven recommendations in the parket bud, sorry, in the parking budget for 2023. It's been moved in principle by the mayor, diva, seconded, seconded by Counselor Campbell. Are there any questions or comments of the motion? If not, all in favor, opposed, and that's carried unanimously. So that will be referred to the January 31st meeting, sorry?
Through the chair, I just want to clarify, I think we took it as staff direction that we would report back and Mr. Brown will provide timing as when he can report back on the request that Counselor LaCoco made. So I'm going to assume it might be Q2 or Q3 that we can report back on.
Okay.
That would be correct, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, I wasn't looking for that to be accomplished this year, but to get a report for possibly operations for next year.
For next year, okay.
Yes. Sorry, I should have clarified that.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thanks, Mr. Brown. Appreciate you coming. Under 5.2, we have our Niagara Falls Public Library 2023 operating budget. I know tonight we have our chief librarian, Ms. Subnayak Kilgore, and also our vice chairman of the library board and a good volunteer, Mr. John Anstruther. So welcome to both of you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to meet with council tonight, present the 2023 library operating budget request. Obviously, some of you know me. Thank you for the reappointment. I don't know if that was because you have such confidence in me or you just got stuck with me, but either way, I'm taking it as a good sign. I would like to also thank you for the appointment of our new board members and to welcome our board members, some who are in attendance here this evening and as well as a couple watching online. One thank to the two members that were not able to be reappointed because they did not have the personal time to be able to do that. But Kevin and Dinesh were awesome on our board and were very, very helpful with us through the last term and we really wish them well and hopefully they'll consider that again sometime in the future to, to join us again. I'd like to give a big shout out to the folks at City Hall who have assisted us throughout the past years, your CAO, Jason, the finance and HR departments, and certainly to Jess in procurement who managed to teach this old dog a few new tricks in tendering and procurement. A huge thank you to our staff, without whom they worked through some very tough and trying times throughout the pandemic to ensure that our library patrons could continue to access services that we were able to provide during the stages of the lockdowns. They truly show the most positive face of the library each and every day. Now, each counselor has received the library's version of the key to the city in their packages. I got one right here. The library in our version has actually issued over 45,000 keys to our magic kingdom in 2022. We got you beat, Jim, although I would very much like to get one of those nice keys you have. Boom, this is a beauty, okay? We know that membership has its privileges. To our newest members of council, I would like to give you a short introduction to the governance of how our public library operates. Okay, and we have a slide for that, I believe, okay? The library is actually a separate nonprofit registered charitable organization and is governed by the Ontario Public Libraries Act and is required to follow the rules governing us under that act. The board, as appointed by you, our council, is tasked to oversee the library to ensure that it functions as legislated and is fiscally responsible. The city under the act and through this budget process is tasked with funding the majority of our operations on behalf of all of the residents of Niagara Falls. It is often difficult to understand this relationship that's described under the act as, as it just seems that the library is another department of the city. This is not the case as the library is legislated to operate as a separate entity. We are, yet we are working together for the benefit and well-being of our community and partners in the delivery of the essential services that we both need and want within the city to make our city a great place to live. The library, along with the city, is currently working to overcome the challenges that have resulted from the pandemic. The library has also faced increases in costs due to inflation, as we're all dealing with. Changes to the owner's pension program has obligated us to offer enrollment to all new and existing part-time staff, which has added an increase in costs with no offsetting increase in our provincial operating grant, which by the way, has not increased for over 20 years. That puts the cost onto the library to build into our budget. The board has presented the budget that encompasses the needs to ensure that we not only can we provide the core services to our ever-growing city, but to also ensure that we can bring the Stanford branch back online this year. The tenders for the construction of this branch have closed as of today and we are optimistic that we will be able to move ahead very quickly in the next phase of that renovation. As your board, we are committed to bringing forth a budget that fairly and completely represents the cost to continue the operate, to continue to operate our library with the council's desire to serve our community at a level of service that our community not only wants but needs as we navigate the future together. And I really like to ensure that you understand that what, what our, this is goal for this is to return to a level of service that we had pre-pandemic and we're not quite there yet. So, Alicia?
Okay, so I would just like to talk about the impact we're having in our community and we'll look at the slide 2022 at a glance so you can see some of our staff. So we are seeing visitors and residents return to our bricks and mortar on-site with 217,715 visits. So we're showing a good increase to people actually walking through the front doors again. We'll all, you've also seen here that we have a 19% increase in our virtual visits and that is, you know, many of the folks that discovered our services and our online services during the pandemic are continuing to use our services as we move forward. So the next slide talks about items borrowed. So in 2022, we had over half a million items borrowed by residents in the community. That's an increase of 29%. And as John mentioned, we have an 8% increase in 2022 to 45,086 memberships. So those are active and unique memberships throughout the city. We're very proud of that. Next slide shows our huge increase in return to computer sessions at the library. For many residents in the city, there is still a digital divide and the library is one of the only and few places that you can access computer service, wifi and even just having help from staff. This has been, I know through the pandemic and after the pandemic, one of our most well-used services. In 2022, we did 1,331 programs and had over 24,000 attendees. So this is a really good indication of people coming back into our spaces and wanting to return to in-person programming. The next slide talks about our community outreach. This is really a lot of the work we do beyond our bricks and mortars and in the community. Last year, we saw, or sorry, we did 222 class visits, seeing almost 9,000 students in our community and connecting with them in an educational manner. In addition to that, we did another 189 outreach programs, reaching over 10,000 individuals in our city. In addition to that, we offer what we call the Visiting Library Service. This is a program where the library delivers books to individuals that are homebound and physically cannot access the library. We had, we did 751 visits, we had 75 customers and those are customers in their home and as well as long-term care homes. So we were able to visit them and, and deliver over 10,000 items. Now, the next slide, John's going to give you an overview on our ask for the 2023 operating budget.
And one thing, just in the slides that you've just seen, those numbers represent people, individuals in our community that are, are being impacted, we think in a positive way by our library. The library is truly a community hub and the library is one of the last free spaces that welcomes all. We connect people to services, to each other and to information. We love the work that we do and we love having the ability to provide these services to the community in Niagara Falls. As Alicia has noted, we have over 45,000 active memberships that, that are working, but we also serve people that don't have library cards. That's like half the population of our city has a library card, which is really, really an impressive statistic, we believe. We hope that the council sees the value of the library and its role in the community as we, and we continue to support our efforts in the future. As a public library, we are actually limited in our revenue generation avenues and that's part of the legislation that we work under. While we can't charge for core services, we have plans to increase our revenues where we are able through some programming, room rentals, fundraising. As a registered charity, we, we can issue tax receipts for any donations that we receive. We have increased our efforts to generate those revenues through donations, sponsorships and fundraising efforts. Right now, our efforts obviously are focused on the Stanford renovation. While those efforts do not impact the library's operating budget, we are committed to continuing those efforts on an ongoing basis. Many of the increases in the budget are beyond our control, such as COLA, wage progressions, pensions. There were additional increases to insurance and, and security in our facilities. We have increased security costs because we have returned to pre-pandemic levels of operating at Victoria Avenue. This planned reopening of the Stanford branch will bring about a new operating cost such as cleaning and that, and we're going to have more utility costs and things when we do that. Our operating costs have been increasing at a rate higher than the budgetary increases over the last few years. Year after year, our budget increase has been lower than what the library actually needed to maintain our service level. At this point, we are essentially in need of a catch-up year. Otherwise, we'll need to turn to a reduction in services.
Okay, so I just want to take a moment and, and speak about our hours of operation. So pre-pandemic, the library was operating at just over 200 hours weekly across the system, across the city. As a result of the restrictions and regulations during COVID, as well as the delayed opening of the Stanford branch, we have returned to only 150 hours weekly across the system. When Stanford opens, which is, we're anticipating later this year in 2023, we will then return to a full 200 hours weekly of service. We understand that each library community is different and unique and that we have to be responsive to the needs of our community and to what their wants and needs are. So in a short comparison, when you look at St. Catherine's and Welland, for instance, our library, we have four branches in Niagara Falls. There are four branches in St. Catherine's and three branches in Welland. Our library board owns half of our branches. In our, our sister cities of, of St. Catherine's and Welland, they don't own property. So with the ownership of our two branches, the Victoria Avenue branch and the Chippewa branch, there's also capital costs that are associated with that as well as operating costs. So when we look at, you know, comparing ourselves to other municipalities, these are things to consider. In addition to that, when we look at our membership, we have really great engagement here. When we look at memberships, we have a higher level of engagement and need here in Niagara Falls. In the city of St. Catherine's, they roughly have 46,000 active members for their membership and that, that number is based on the annual survey 2021 numbers. And as you know, our 2022 numbers say we have about just over 46,000. So we are really proud of the level of service we are able to offer our community. We are doing more with less and we have, we're doing more with less and offering a high level of service for the residents of our community. We're doing a great job with programming and we're far ahead of some of our comparables. Where we are doing a poor job is that in collections. In St. Catherine's, they are putting a great investment into collections. Here in the Falls, we're only putting half as much and as a result, we are behind in our collection. So in this budget ask, we have asked for an increase in collection and that is reflected in our ask.
Yeah, I think one thing that, that really stands out when we look at some of the statistics is when you look at the engagement of the population, and we're using the 2021 numbers because they're the only ones we have at this point from our sister branches in St. Catherine's and Welland. Our community is engaging just slightly less than 50% of our community, whereas Welland and St. Catherine's are at about 33% engagement. We, we really are getting out there and we have a lot of people working and they're almost half the population of the city carries cards. In our programming, as Alicia had mentioned, like we've had like 1,200, in 2021, 1,200 programs that were running and we had 30,000 people engage in those programs as opposed to our, our branch, of the branches in St. Catherine's, 366 programs for about 5,600 people engaged, okay? That's in a city that, that's, you know, not quite double the size of Niagara Falls. In Welland, they offered 789 programs and 24,000 people involved. I mean, they're, they're, they're doing something for their community, but the impact in our community is just, it's absolutely incredible when we looked at the numbers. I couldn't believe it when I looked at them. It, it's just, it's really impressive, certainly to us as a library and I think it's our community. Now, we're up to, the next part is the operating ask at a glance. The operating budget ask that we're, we're presenting here tonight is an 8.55% increase or 4,000, $422,833. We know that's a scary number. We know that that's significant, but there are factors that have got us to that position. The library board has made considerable, considerable effort to return to pre-pandemic levels of service with all four branches open and that really and truly is our goal. We know people are missing Stanford desperately and they want that branch open again and hopefully, once we open those envelopes sometime today, we're going to have some really good positive news to bring forward. We need to ensure that the library resources and funds are efficiently utilized and that's why you've appointed us to do that. And hopefully, we are, are going to be able to do that and hopefully you agree with how we're trying to do that. Begin fundraising issues. Now, this is something we, we really have been weak on for a long time. We have not gone to the community to raise funds. We're now beginning fundraising efforts to ensure that the renovations at Stanford Center Library Branch are going to be completed in 2023 and that reduces the impact of our capital budget, but realize that as a result of that, opening that branch is going to increase our operating costs. And that was something that we had kind of forewarned last year where we were able to mitigate some of our costs because Stanford was not in operation. in operation. Now, when we reopen that branch, we're going to have to repopulate that branch and start to fill some of the holes that we've had. And certainly, it's going to impact the collection as well, because we need to put a few things in there so people can get out. The budget reductions, if we look at that, that will going to result in the library being unable to maintain its infrastructure and provide the level of service that satisfies the needs of our community. The library board would be forced to implement some sort of reduction in service, and that would be something that we would have to go back to the board and revisit that and see, can we mitigate that, how we do that? I mean, it's your choice of how you fund us, and we're going to do our best to do whatever we can to maintain that.
So the next slide, 2023 budget considerations. So one of the highest drivers of increase to our budget ask is in our labor expenses. So we are seeing, this would include a cost of living adjustment, progressions and transitions, as John mentioned, Omer's enrollment, which we have to now offer to all part-time staff, as well as we've added, because we are returning to pre-pandemic levels, we've also reflected in here a return of summer students and internships. So that will be offset by some of the revenue we hope to get from grants, but that is reflected in here. Another increase is contracted services. So with Stanford opening, there's the cost for cleaning that's in here, and as John has put it, there will be utilities and things like that. So you'll see those type of increases for Stanford. We've also had to, as we move back to our pre-pandemic hours, we've had to increase our security presence at the Victoria Avenue Library, and then that's showing the reflection of the increase as well in our budget ask. As I mentioned with collections, unfortunately, we're seeing some really high costs and increases from our book vendors. In particular, one book vendor that we use, it's an eighteen percent increase. This is similar increases from a lot of the other vendors we're using as well. And then what this means is that it results in greater costs, but our ability to buy less. So in essence, we are still buying less for our community. In prior years, when we have needed to reduce our budget, this is one of the areas that has been targeted for budget cuts, creating a deficit over the years. So just in 2022, we cut over sixty-six thousand dollars, and we're definitely feeling the impact of that. And with the opening of our next branch, that we're really going to see the increases, which is why we've asked for the increase in collections here as well. And lastly, programming expenses, because we are, again, returning to pre-pandemic levels, we've increased the cost for programming to offer that to the community. See, John? So next slide are revenues.
If you look at what we're looking here, obviously, our budget request from the municipal for operating is five million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. We're looking at a transfer for the HVAC debenture, which is something we had to do at Victoria, and we're in year six of ten. Yeah, that is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars to help pay off that debenture. We have a line for grants of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, and these are grants not associated with the Stanford renovation. Okay, so not to be confused with grants coming in for that. And that, I think, is our, like, our, what we call our PLOG.
What we call is our provincial operating grant. This is a transfer from the ministry, and as John has mentioned, it has been frozen for over twenty years. So it's not very sustainable. So it has, that grant is included in that amount as well, as well as the library-generated revenue. So this, these are attempts and activities we're doing in-house to raise our revenue. So right now, what we're doing is we're looking at our return of all of our room bookings. So we are working with the city right now to migrate to the city software so that we can add all of our rooms to the booking system. During the pandemic, we did some renovations, so we've also added more rooms for potential rental. So that's something we're working on as well.
And you can see another line here is donations. Because we are just in the infancy of beginning this program through Canada Helps, we are hoping to raise funds for the library through our community. And again, this has been a weakness we haven't really explored. We didn't have the people to do that. Now, we have someone that's now dedicated to getting this back up and running and trying to go out to the community for those people that may be interested in donating to our library. We can issue tax receipts. We can make that happen. And an interesting thing on the operating grant, we have made our MPP when Gates aware of the fact that that has not increased in over twenty years. But we also realize that the province has a few other things on the burner that may bring the library considerations a little further down the list. We do hope at some point that the province will actually look at that and say, you know what, it's about time we get an increase in that operating grant, because, you know, if you hadn't had a raise in twenty years, it's pretty hard to get through. And some of the folks on pension have not had a raise in those many years, and you know, we know how hard that is for people to operate. And we know this is a lot of money. We know this is a high percentage. But to get us back to where we were, and it's been a struggle to get there, we all know that, this is what we're asking as an amount that is open and transparent to you. We're trying to do this without padding extra things in the budget. The next slide is going to be our expenditures, and we can help walk through that, because I think what you'll see is a lot of the costs that are not really something that we have good control of make up the bulk of what the ask is. And Alicia will walk you through the expense side.
So just as I previously mentioned, the biggest, you'll see that the biggest bulk, the bulk of our ask and our cost is in staffing and labor. As a nonprofit registered charity, labor is our largest line. That's not uncommon. You will also see the increases for resources there. That's our collection material. So that's your books and eBooks and those types of collections. Technology and hardware. If you drop down to contracted services there, you will see this is where we were speaking about the increase in security, and it's reflected through there. Insurance, our insurance costs have gone up, I think it's eleven-point-five percent this year. That's also reflected here. And then, of course, we have the long-term debt repayment of the HVAC. So even though the total expenses were coming down to that eight-point-eight-two percent ask, we're asking from the city the transfer, we're asking for eight-point-five-five percent, because we are engaging in some revenue activities to try and help offset that. So that's how we land at the eight-point-five-five percent ask. So just for mitigation, the library board has discussed mitigation efforts. So already, we're talking about community rental space returning in 2023, and we're increasing a forecasted revenue of just over seventeen thousand dollars. We've taken the time during the pandemic to redo our cost schedule, so to make them also more competitive and align somewhat with what the city is also offering. So that's one of the things we're doing. And then in effort to find efficiencies, this is one of the reasons we're working with the city, to migrate all of our room bookings to the active net system. And this will also create a really wonderful and seamless experience for the users, who'll be able to go one place to book all and have all the rooms and spaces available in the city in the one space. So that's what we're working. We've also done a good bit of cross-training with our staff. This is something that we've been doing for the last couple of years and really have a concentration this year. And this is an attempt to maximize the impact of our current staffing complement is with this cross-training effort. And then we've also created the framework for fundraising, as John has spoken about, the Canada Helps online donation portal. We've got that all up and running. So we're going to continue to leverage that. Our focus, though, for 2023 is to get Stanford up and running, and our donation efforts are focused on capital this year. That said, down the line and in the future, the donation efforts can be directed elsewhere within our operating budget. But for 2023, that is our focus. And that's it.
And that really brings us to the end of our presentation. Obviously, we're here to take questions. I'm more than willing to take questions, and I will let Alicia give answers.
Well, thanks, Alicia, and thanks, John. It was a good presentation. I noticed that you mentioned that you have some of your board here. I was wondering if you could introduce them for council's sake.
Go ahead, John. Do you want to stand? So we have Barb Ness that's here, Anne Andreas-Jones, and Kathy Tullis. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, thanks. And I also want to mention as well that we have Joyce Morocco, one of our regional council presidents here. So welcome, Joyce. Appreciate you being here. All right. Any questions or comments of council? I have Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two things to discuss. One is Bill 23 with development charges. The library counts on development charges as revenue. So with all of Bill 23 upended and not sure where things are going, that could affect the revenue at the library. So I just wanted to put that, but nobody knows where that's going. And I was wondering if either John or Alicia could speak more about the partnership with the city for the need for the security guard. What services are we partnering together with the city and the library, and what are you offering, and why do we need the security guard?
Sure, I can do that, John. So through the chair. Thank you for your question, Lori. So right now, we do work with our community partners. So we're working with the region. We're working with the city, as well as our community, like, social service agencies. Right now, the library offers warming and cooling for the city. So those are services during library hours. So as I mentioned, you know, our return is to, we hope to return to that two hundred hours weekly. And during those hours, anyone in the community is welcome to come in and warm or cool, depending on the season. In addition to that, though, we working with our community partners, such as NASO from the region, our library, especially our Victoria Avenue location, we work with a lot of our community and social service agencies to provide resources for those that are homeless or marginalized out of that branch. So what we're doing right now is essentially offering our space and working with our community partners so that they can come in with their expertise and with their knowledge, their social workers, our staff are not social workers, to provide resources and care for those that are marginalized and homeless. That said, there, as a result of the pandemic, even though we were seeing some of these issues pre-pandemic, I really feel the pandemic has compounded a lot of issues. We're seeing a lot of issues with individuals with mental health, a sharp rise in addictions and overdoses at that branch, as well as, you know, people acting out, not wanting to leave. We've had to issue a number of trespass, and notices of trespass. So that has, of course, created the need to have security and have security for all hours that we are open in order to provide an environment that is safe, so everyone can come to the library and access services and feel safe. So that's what we're offering right now and working with the city to try and help manage some of that.
Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you, Alicia. The other one that you didn't mention is the shelter enrollment. So we do have a shelter open right now, the out-of-the-cold shelter, and the guests go to the library to enroll for that night. So I know that that's bringing a lot of extra people into the library as well.
Yes, actually, that's a great point. Thank you, Lori. So right now, we're working with Start Me Up. So they come to the library each day. They're there for about two, three hours. And what they do is registration for the shelter beds. So we see a lot of folks come in in the morning. Start Me Up is there. They register. So I think what usually happens is they go over and they have breakfast at third space, and then after that, they work their way to the library. And at the library, they meet with the Start Me Up folks, and then they have registration. So this is a great partnership that we're seeing. But, you know, as Lori pointed out, there are, you know, there are some issues that we are experiencing, some challenges. But there's also the wonderful fact, too, that at the end of the evening, when we're closing the library, and it's our staff left to try and find homes or to call to see what shelter beds are available for folks that are just left there at the end of the evening. So the idea is to work with Start Me Up so that a lot of these folks can have registered and a guaranteed spot at the shelter, and that also reduces on the end of the evening, when there are, of course, less staff in the building as well, that we have support for staff not to have to be in those uncomfortable situations, too, of having to turn someone out into the cold with nowhere to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, John.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. I have Mayor Doherty.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. Good presentation. Thank you. The one question was in regard to the vending machine. You used to have a book vending machine. I don't know if you still do, at the Gale Center. And so my question is, is that program ongoing? How's it going? And have we looked at other locations, like, potentially in the future, like, we're going to have a new hospital opening up? You know, is that a place that you would want something like that? I don't know. So I just wanted to throw that one out there.
Sure, I can take that one there. Through the chair. So we do have a book vending machine at the Gale Center. So the way that works, it's with RFID technology. So you just need your card, and you can tap the card on, put it into the door. It opens up, and then you can take out materials. And you can also return materials there as well. So we've had that partnership at the Gale Center for quite a number of years now. We are, however, reevaluating, and maybe there are other locations in the city. The Gale Center seemed like a really great place to start, but we also see a lot of folks from out of town there. So we are looking for places in the city where maybe more of our community would frequent that location. So there are some really good opportunities at, you know, like, possibly at the exchange, when the exchange opens, at the hospital. So those are, it's really kind of like a niche market, those machines. So you can actually tailor your collection and material to suit where it lands. So that is definitely, we've made the investment in the machine. So really, all you need is, like, the ability to plug it in and for a data connection, and then we are able to move it somewhere else. So we're always looking for, to explore those opportunities.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate the update on that. And then the other question was, now, with the new university coming to the downtown, have you had any opportunity yet to meet with any of these people, to see if there's anything that makes sense on working together, or has there been any discussions in that regard?
The board is always open to speaking with the city and, you know, discussing opportunities for possible joint venture or cost savings, finding efficiencies. So we're always open to that. We haven't met with any of those folk. We would be open to that. The board would love to have someone come and make a deputation at the board and speak about that. I do feel that there are opportunities to explore, but as I said, we haven't met with them, and we would welcome a conversation to start that.
And so, Chair, maybe not a bad idea if the board reaches out to them, possibly. They're a pretty big group, global, and I think there could be a lot of symbiotic opportunities, especially as we're in the planning stages with the first cohort arriving next year. Probably be a good time to start the discussions. Huge opportunity for the city and maybe the library, too. Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselors change.
Thank you, Chair. I was just looking at the, so the hires and that. Do you have, are all the hires for the Stanford library that will be, are they added into this budget as well? They are?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
If I may, just another comment with that. We, the last couple of years, we were able to have, you know, we didn't fill all those vacancies because we've been waiting. So we've been able to get by. But with Stanford opening this year, everything is filled now. So we are at capacity. So this budget reflects that at capacity.
Any other, Counselor Patel?
Through chair. I see the services for cleaning services. In those services, how are they decided? Like, how do you pick the service company? Is there a certain list of the company you go by, or there's bids that are open?
So for, we would just have, we have our, the library board has a procurement policy. So it would just be in line with our procurement policy. So for the Stanford Center Library, that is one where we would be looking for a contracted service. For our larger location down on Victoria Avenue, we have staff in-house that would do that. But with the Stanford location, we are looking to contract that out. So we would be doing that in line with our procurement policy, which would mean a minimum, I'm not, I'm thinking it would most likely be quotes, because it would be within the threshold of obtaining a minimum of three quotes.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions of the presenters? Any other council members have any questions of the presenters? Oh, sorry, Counselor Patel.
Actually, I have a mother of two daughters, and my kids grew up, library played a big part in my kids' life. Like, it was a weekly visit to library. They went to preschool programs, and they even did the school visits to libraries, too. But I would like to suggest that we are making cut across the board, everywhere. So I would like to suggest if we can reduce the budget by $25,000, and that will bring the overall budget increase to 8%. And I would like to make a motion that we reduce the budget by $25,000, and we let the board decide where they want to make the cuts.
I was just gonna mention, Counselor, I was just asking the CIO. I know staff are gonna be making a presentation on the ABCs, the appointments, the boards, and the commissions. I wonder if it might be better if I, you know, take any motions related to those at that time after they make their presentations. This way, all of council can have the information that they're gonna be presenting. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, then, of the presenters right now? Okay, if not, Alicia, John, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for presenting.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the board, thanks for giving us this opportunity to talk with you. And hopefully, we'll be able to visit you again very shortly and find out what's happening at Stanford, because we gotta get to those envelopes next. Take care.
All right, thanks to both of you. Okay, next up under 5.3 is a presentation on the 2023 operating budget. I believe that our CIO, Mr. Burgess, is gonna be presenting to council. So Jason, I'll pass it over to you. That's only 43 slides, right? Forty-four, I see. Yeah, there's a couple addendums.
I'll, I'll give everyone some relief. I'm not gonna go through each slide. So I do want to thank council for providing staff with the opportunity to provide some additional context to the budget. Budget documents are always tough to read. They're cold numbers, you know, on a page. And you can never provide enough context to some of the decisions and some of the numbers. So that's why we thought it was important to pull the presentation together and provide some additional context. You know, we start off with the city of Niagara Falls. I've always said, city of Niagara Falls is positioned very well. It's a high-value, high amenities community with a very reasonable tax base for the, for the residents. And the goal of this budget was to maintain that high value. But we have some catching up to do on a number of requirements. So we titled the budget, you know, it's a catch-up budget. And some of the reasons why we are catching up, first off was COVID. COVID hit the city of Niagara Falls probably harder than any other city in Ontario. That was when you close borders to the top destination city, the implications are far more reaching than any other community in Ontario. And, you know, even the provincial government has recognized that. And the federal tourism commission has said it'll still take several years for tourism to recover. And this council made decisions, you know, very appropriately, frankly, to delay a number of costs to provide benefits that far outweighed what other communities were doing to assist the community with COVID. No one had a crystal ball. No one thought that there was gonna be record-high inflation. No one thought that there was gonna be invasion of Ukraine, that screwed up supply chains and increased gas. And so that, you know, after you get out of COVID, you thought you took the Mike Tyson punch to the chin, and then, you know, then Lennox Lewis walked in afterwards with inflation. So I'm throwing that in just for Counselor Strange. So, yeah. So, you know, we've, you know, we, the city has been hit with, you know, two very timely things. And, you know, we have to adjust our budget for that. In recent years, and we'll get into this, we've had very low budget increases, well below rates of inflation, and it's just not sustainable. And I'll talk more about this later. But, you know, at the end of the day, a city provides services to its citizens. We provide swimming lessons. We provide pools. We plow the roads. But Niagara Falls is not Hogwarts. We're not a magical city that somehow the cost to plow a road is different in the city of Niagara Falls than it is in Welland or Port Coburn. The person who's a lifeguard is getting paid the same as the person in St. Catherine's. You know, we're not insulated from costs. So, you know, that's why it's important to compare ourselves to where we are from a value proposition to other cities, because we incur those same costs. The city of Niagara Falls has been granted also the most amount of urban boundary expansion in the region. So we have a lot of future growth. We have to pay for a lot of those costs now. We have to do the secondary plans and prepare all the planning for all that, for that growth to come. And, you know, that's reflected in this budget. And, you know, we also have aging technology systems. We did not invest well in the infrastructure of the city. And I'm saying that, and the people at home can't see this, but there's been a bucket sitting on this floor for several weeks, because frankly, the roof leaks here. You know, we do the best, the facility staff does the best we can. But, you know, we do a lot of things here with duct tape and bandages to keep the cost low. But, you know, that's not normal for an organization of $100 million to have a bucket on the floor of council. So we've been doing everything we can to keep costs low. But at some point in time, you gotta catch up. And that's what the nature of this budget is. So this is the agenda. I'm not gonna go through it all, but we'll break down a few of the items. The budget overview, you know, this is typical. We, we do a bottom-up budget. We engage with all the departments. A little, couple of new things this year was, you know, we started a number of pilot projects that we reevaluated. Mr. Brown talked about the one pilot project with students. We gave it a shot. It worked out very well. And, you know, we're integrating that again. This council knows that we had a corporate-wide Shark Tank thing where ideas came forward. We've implemented a number of those ideas, and some of those are in the budget. So that's a couple of different things that happened to the budget process this year. Once again, second year in a row, we've put out a survey to the respondents. It's, you know, it's an internet-based survey, so you take it with what it is. But this council has been presented with all the results of that survey, and the survey results are also online for the public. I won't go through them all. Everyone had a chance to read it. But from a staff point of view, we wanted to take an approach to the budget. And from staff's point of view, we want to maintain competitive or affordable tax rates. We wanted to maintain our service levels as best we can. We also understand that there's things coming down the pipeline that we need to prepare for. That includes, you know, the hospital that's coming. We have provincial requirements that this council has been talked to about with the provincial asset management. I'll talk more about it tonight. I'm sure you'll get sick of the provincial requirements for asset management over the next couple of years. But we can't avoid the topic, and we need to deal with it. We also need to prepare the organization. We talk, you know, I talk about the bucket on the floor, but I'm also talking about modernizing our systems. We have antiquated, antiquated IT systems. This council has given us the capital to start to invest in those systems. We also need the people to start to bring those systems online and bring it forward, and that's in this budget. So overall, you know, when I look back at the budget, and staff look back at it, we believe this budget allows us to tick all those boxes. Does it, does it solve all our issues? No, but it solves a very big majority of all those issues. So, some of the budget considerations that went into it. The first big one is, last year, this council, with recommendation from staff, said, listen, we need, we know we needed an increase last year, but it wasn't the time because of COVID. Like I said before, we got hit by Mike Tyson. People needed to recover from that. The previous council made a decision to take that $6.5 million and say, you know what, we'll bring that in next year when people are fully recovered. So if you start off with just that $6.5 million, we needed an 8.7% increase on the budget this year before you do anything. So that's a, that's a huge impact on our budget. The other big item in the budget that changes many things is Niagara Transit was successfully transitioned over to Niagara Regional Transit Commission, and Counselor Campbell sits on that commission going forward. And, you know, that comes off our levy, but another levy will come to the, to the resident taxpayer. But in this budget, there's some holdover costs that the city's still responsible for. So the full, so we still have slightly over half a million dollars of transit costs that we're gonna pay for in 2023 for that, for the transition of transit. Inflationary impacts. Everyone's talked about inflation. If I take the CPI index between 2021 and 2023, inflation's gone up 16.6%. The one thing I want to point out here, though, is our revenue hasn't grown that much. Our revenue's only grown 5%. Our expenses have grown 20.5%. Now, someone might say, well, your expenses have grown higher than inflation. Yes, that's true. But that includes a whole bunch of additional services we included. So within that time period, we finished fully costing out the implication of, of the new fire station, Station 7. We've included the cost for the exchange. We've included the cost for McBain in that. So we are not at inflation. We've actually added services, very significant services to this, you know, to the services of the region without really going that much above inflation. And in this budget for 2023, we also have significant increases in planning fees, or planning costs, I should say. Two other major requirements, and these are provincial regulations. These are not things that, you know, we necessarily control or get to decide upon. But asset management, this council was presented that our core funding, our core assets, which include our roads and underground pipes, you know, we have, we should be spending, you know, just less than $8 million per year more today, every year, to maintain those assets. Then we go to our non-core assets, which we're studying right now, and we'll get a further report later this year on it. But the last time we estimated it, we should have been spending $11.3 million more. And that's to maintain the McBain Center, the Gale Center, City Hall, so we don't have buckets in it. So when you combine that up, what the experts say is that we should be spending about $20 million more per year just to keep what we have. Not to add anything new, just to keep what we have in good working order. Do the quick math on an $80 million budget, that's a 25% increase. That's a big elephant. Every, we're not alone. Every community in Ontario has this issue. There are billions and billions of dollars that municipalities are behind, provinces behind, the feds are behind. You're not gonna eat this elephant in one bite, excuse me, and we're going to need to, you know, plan to absorb these costs over time. Excuse me. The next provincial requirement is Bill 109, Bill 23. At the end of the day, you know, the provincial government wants to add housing faster. Excuse me, they want to eliminate some of the red tape. And what that means is, we need to hire more planners. The cost is about $800,000 bucks, excuse me, for that, you know, to meet those provincial deadlines. If we don't meet them, we have to refund planning fees. So it's gonna cost money to the city one way or the other. Excuse me. The next two considerations is fire costs and forestry services. Fire overtime has really taken off over the last couple of years. Excuse me. Most of this is predicated on WSIB claims that relate to traumatic experiences that firefighters get on the job. Just so everyone understands this, the city of Niagara Falls, because of the nature of us as an employer, we pay for WSIB 100%. So if a firefighter goes off on WSIB, we're still paying that firefighter. That cost is still there. But then chief, the chief has to make sure that this position is filled, because he can't go below requirement. So he has to bring another person in to fill that position. But everyone else is already working full-time. So that person comes in at overtime, time and a half. So to maintain that position, we're paying for one person to be off on WSIB, and another person time and a half. So our cost to the city is two and a half times for that position. By hiring more staff, we can eliminate that overtime cost and dramatically reduce our, the overtime cost. Excuse me. So last year, we did a pilot project where we hired two additional firefighters. Because of hiring timelines and training timelines, they didn't really get, you know, on the job so that they were saving time till about September. We have an add-out currently to replace the firefighters. After the decision is made, we'll know exactly how many we're gonna hire, and we're gonna try and bring them in as early as possible to save not only money in 2023, but hopefully a significant reduction in 2024. So that is a big ask in this budget, is to hire six additional firefighting staff to correct those overtime issues. And it's not just, just to be clear, it's not just long-term PTSD claims. You know, the chief is also experiencing other long-term claims, such as maternity or parental leave, that they're also gone for 18 months, and you need to fill someone in for that. Forestry, this council, a number of members around this council has already, has expressed the issues with the underservice of the forestry department. Little interesting statistic, if one of our forest techs plant a tree today, they're probably retired by the next time they get to see that tree. It'd take them 25 years to go through the tree inventory. We don't have enough forestry. It's been massively undermanned for years. And what's happening now with storm severity, with more demands on increased plantings, there's just more and more demand for that service. So the proposal is to add an additional crew plus the appropriate equipment to address that pretty significant backlog. There's also a risk, an insurance risk issue, quite frankly. If one of our trees is not maintained and falls and damages or hurts somebody, it's on us. It's an insurance claim. We file, we pay through insurance claims for a number of tree issues each year. So there's, there's a savings that we haven't calculated, but we believe that there will be some of that. Modernization. As I mentioned, we have a number of programs that we've included in the capital budget. We need IT folks and other skilled individuals to implement those projects so we can become more efficient. You know, we are so manual in our systems that we can't get efficiency. And as we grow, we become more and more inefficient. We need the right tools to become efficient. We need to put these systems in place. We also have increasing concerns with regards to cybersecurity. And we need to ensure that we're, you know, top of the game in that. So, you know, there's some employment cost for that. Improving our budget, some budget policy improvements. The report goes on a fair amount with regards to debt and expense placeholders and fleet replacement reserves. I won't go through it all. But, you know, I look at this as, you know, if you have bought a car, or you took on, or you're going to buy a house, you better be putting away enough money so that when you need to replace that car, or the mortgage payments start coming due, that you have that money already built into your budget to pay for. And that's really what that does. Other reserves, we've become a bit more realistic with our reserves. Everybody knows we have an election once every four years, especially the people around this table. We need to budget every year to ensure that we have enough money for when the election comes up. We're not taking one big, large hit on the budget. So we kind of smooth that out. Same with Dr. Crewman, some of the other ones. This is, this is, you know, just to put a little context in what staff deals with sometimes. You know, we've seen increased vandalism. We have our cemeteries get headstones, especially some of our historic headstones get toppled. We've had ATVs, people drive ATVs on our sports fields, cost us tens and tens of thousands of dollars to repair it. We have an increase in graffiti going on. You know, I was, I wanted to name this something differently. You can insert whatever adjective you'd like for the individuals who do this. But we don't have a fund. I wish I had a foolish fund, or like I said, insert whatever adjective you want, to pay for these costs. But what happens is, when someone goes and burns one of our play, one of our play structures, or when someone goes and takes an ATV and tears up one of our fields, you know, Mary Ann and stuff have to find money from another budget to fix that. We don't have a budget for that. We're not asking for a budget for that. But this is increasing. And, you know, we're starting to steal from Peter to pay Paul on some of this stuff. We also have more severe storms. What's happening is, before you'd have a once-in-10-year storm, as they call it, every 10 years. That was the name of the storm. Now that once-in-10-year storm happens once every five years. So you have these massively severe storms. We've had two very big winter storms, maybe another one coming. And instead of just snow, kind of... And instead of just snow kind of, you know, five centimeters falling today, five centimeters falling another day, five centimeters falling, we get thirty centimeters dumped on us. We have to call in massive amounts of equipment, massive amounts of overtime to clear that up, or we get these massive windstorms where our tree crews and our crews are out clearing up that because we just didn't have that gentle breeze or gentle wind. We have these massive storms. So our overtime costs and some of the other costs keep on climbing. This council took a leadership role, Council Campbell did that, by declaring a state of emergency on mental health, addiction, and homelessness. Those costs have impacted us quite significantly. There is no mental health, addiction, and homelessness expense line anywhere. But thirty percent of my bylaw time is dealt with homelessness issues and addiction issues. You know, they're not outright, you know, what they should be doing. Sometimes they're dealing with this on a much increased basis. Last year alone, to clean up some of these encampments, it cost over forty, four hundred thousand dollars in truck time and disposal fees. Now, we were lucky because we work with the region and there was some funding there. We got some money back this year for that, but we won't have that again next year. We have probably one of the best-in-class approaches to dealing with these issues. We don't let the camps get large. Even a small camp where you think, geez, there's three people there, how did it take three dump trucks to remove all the garbage that's there to take it? It's surprising and impactful on that. But we work with the NRP, we work with the region, we work with, we have an outreach worker that we work with to keep these costs down. And they are down, but it's still costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, again, from a budget we don't have. Some other considerations is that, you know, staff. You know, we did budget a very slight increase in OLG revenue, but staff continue to be cautious around OLG revenue for a number of reasons. Because we we're not sure that the long term, that it'll ever get back to pre-COVID, so we're very cautious with that. So we're conservative with our budget estimate on that. Budget recommendations. It's already been put out there. It's known. Staff are recommending a ten percent increase in the levy budget and a one percent increase in the infrastructure levy. That one percent is a small bite at that large elephant that we talked about. That's twenty million dollars. This budget will help us address all the issues that we're facing. Doesn't solve, our asset management doesn't solve every issue, but it addresses a lot of them and puts the organization in a very good position going forward. For transparency and just how we get there, you know, the budget document is very long with all the numbers. We wanted a simplified approach to it on what are some of the key budget drivers. So you see the last year's budget of seventy-seven million. You take out the transit transfer, you add in the budget deferral from last year, wage increases, new positions, boards and commissions is the library, airport, those budgets. We highlighted to council what the debt placement budget practice will cost taxpayers this year, and same with the fleet charge. The other is all those other costs, gas, fuel, all those other items that go into the budget to come up to eighty-five point eight million dollars. Excuse me. Staff understand that's a big increase. Staff has outlined and will go through it, you know, item by item, a number of recommended cuts to reduce that ten percent. But that, those are service-level cuts or revenue increases that this council has to make the decision on, and some they might like, some they they might not like. So when when council's looking at potentially reducing this budget, we kind of made four buckets up for for council. Those first three buckets, the debt placement, the the fleet replacement reserve, and the asset management reserve. You can, council can choose to reduce those. But council has to understand that those costs will not go away. They will come back. That bill will come, you know, in a later date. And so reducing them today is a, what we call a deferred savings, not a sustainable savings. Underneath the scissors there, these are more sustainable savings, but this relates to service-level cuts. You know, we're one of the few cities that plows trails in the wintertime. So we maintain our trails in wintertime, which is great for those who want to actively walk on a trail. But that's a service level that we that we have that other cities don't offer, and it might be great to offer, but it comes at a cost. So there's other options that we can decide to put on there, but those will be for council to make those decisions on. So when I, when I talk about, you know, making sure our tax rates are comparable, you know, I look at what does it, you know, cost a, what does it cost a taxpayer, and how does it compare to other municipalities? So I didn't use the traditional average household. Because you can't use an average household because our average household is different than St. Catherine's and Welland. So I just said, if you had a five hundred thousand dollar assessed house, the average household on our tax roll is about two hundred, just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we always, every time we put that out or the media quotes that, we always get emails saying, who has a two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar house? But but for consistency purposes, we wanted to go with a five hundred thousand thousand dollar house. So when you look at it in two thousand and twenty-two, a five hundred thousand dollar house, you would have paid city taxes of two thousand and six hundred and sixty-three dollars. With a ten percent increase and the one percent infrastructure increase, you'd be at twenty-nine fifty-six, so under three thousand dollars, and I want you to remember that because that's a key number going forward. When I compare city of Niagara Falls to St. Catherine's and Welland, and the reason I do this for two thousand and twenty-two is because we are the only three cities with A, professional firefighters, and B, with with transit. You can see there Niagara Falls is significantly below both St. Catherine's and Welland. And again, I go back to my comment, we're not hog's works here. We're providing these services. We don't have magical powers to reduce the cost, but we are, we are providing those services at a lower rate than the other municipalities. If I look at the region as a whole, you know, we are, we are sitting number eight in two thousand and twenty-two. If you take the full increase, the ten percent increase plus the one percent, we would bump up just above Pelham into the number seven position. I don't know what Pelham's tax increases are going to be. St. Catherine's has already passed their budget. They're going to be one percent higher than that, thirty-three hundred, so they're still well above three thousand dollars. You know, Niagara Falls would still be below three thousand dollars for that house, so we would rank right in the middle of the pack. And just for everyone at home, when I talk about these city taxes, it's our city taxes. I'm not talking about region taxes, or education, or wastewater, so, which makes up, you know, a percentage of the total tax bill. And for comparative reasons, this is how the budget is is broken down, and we'll talk a bit about that later. But when I always look at taxes, you know, my dad always used to tell me, there's a difference between price and value and never confuse the two. So it's one thing to say, well, yeah, we're we're cheaper, but what do you get for it? And these are a select number of KPIs. We distributed to council a number of other KPIs. And what I can tell you is we are a high-value, high-service community. When you look at ice pads, we have five ice pads. We have four at the Gale Center plus Chippewa. And that's for a population of ninety-four thousand five hundred. So that means that for every eighteen thousand nine hundred residents, there's an ice pad for them. If you moved over to Welland, you'd be up just under twenty-eight thousand ice pads per resident. St. Catherine's, I put a star beside it because the St. Catherine's ice pad number is a little confusing. They, they have two ice pads that they share with Thorold that just got released in the in the Canada Summer Parks, and they have one ice pad that is actually run by the Marathon Athletic Association. So you have to kind of put a context to that. Splash pads, we have more, you know, splash pads than anybody else, and on a per capita basis, we're way ahead. Indoor pools, only St. Catherine's has one for a hundred and thirty-six thousand. We have one, plus we fund a significant financial contribution to the Boys and Girls Club for their indoor pool. Soccer fields, you know, we're right up there. The library just presented. You know, we have, you know, we have the same number of libraries than St. Catherine's for a smaller population. Firefighters, we have more firefighters. We have more road kilometers than anybody in Niagara. So we take care of more roads and bridges than anybody else in Niagara. And there's a cost to taking care of roads. We we shovel more sidewalks than anybody else in Niagara. We do two hundred kilometers of of road. So we provide really high levels of service, and there's a cost to that. But like I said, for what we're doing, because we're doing it right in the middle of the pack, we believe that's very good value to the taxpayer. So when I put this budget in perspective, we had a lot of balls against us, and and the teeter-totter was kind of slanted against us with all the things that came in. And, you know, we dealt with a lot in this budget, and I think, you know, the budget that's proposed here allows us to address a lot of those budgets. But hey, no politician ever wants to come in with a double-digit increase. I get that. We're not, we're not, we're not, you know, we're not here as staff to give you political advice or to give you the best advice, but we we also don't operate in a vacuum. So we understand further cuts could be required. But there is a, there's a, there's a, there's an issue with when you start to do other cuts. There's a couple of departments you, it's very difficult to cut. Fire Department is one that's very difficult to cut, and they they're about twenty-five percent of the budget. And we're actually adding to the budget this year. That's the recommendation. Planning, I would also suggest not making cuts because whatever you cut in planning, you're just going to refund back in fees back to developers because we'll have to refund fees if we can't meet our timelines. So that leaves a much smaller budget, which would would have to bear those cuts. So, you know, I listed the budgets out there for a number of the areas that you could cut, and it's twenty-four million dollars. You know, if you wanted to cut eight million bucks, you know, you're going to ravage those those budget items, those departments, because they're the ones who have to take the brunt of it. So you're talking very significant service cuts to do that. Staff can do that. You know, we can, we can create service levels for whatever level of funding you want to provide, but we can't do it without impacting services, and that is, you know, the this, and we can't say, oh, it's five percent across the board because it doesn't work like that. You know, if I tell Joe, Chief Zambito, I'm cutting your budget by five percent, he goes, great, but I have provincial regulations I may need to maintain, so I'll just, you know, it'll just be a negative budget variance come the end of the year, because he can't do that. If I tell Kira, yeah, we're going to reduce staff, no problem, but then we're refunding fees. So, you know, you have to be realistic with how you do a budget, a budget cut, and where the cuts will come from. You know, staff can provide a whole bunch of suggestions, and council can send us away, and we can go and and tell you what, you know, what will be the implications. And some of these have come before council before. We talked about a snow clearing bylaw where residents would clear the sidewalks, which is very common in other communities. You know, we've, we've, we can roll back forestry, but I heard over and over again, listen, we got to do more on forestry. You know, we can reduce bylaw. I I'm carrying, you know, kind of a half extra bylaw position because I got some additional funding. But that's the deal with all the issues with homelessness and mental health and some of the other challenges that are going on. So, you know, we can do that. We have some of the best fields. We have probably some of the best cemeteries in the in the province. Oaks Park doesn't need to look as good as it does, you know, quite frankly. We we can cut some of our service levels to, you know, to to do that. But that's a very tough decision for staff to make. That's something that council would have to make and direct us, and we'll come back with the best plan possible for that. But when I, when I, when I look at putting, you know, the budget in perspective and say, are we delivering value? You know, this is kind of the Big Mac test that I have. So if you had a home that you paid two thousand dollars in city property taxes in two thousand and sixteen, you know, I wrote it out there, so if this was all the historical tax increases that the the council approved between two thousand and seventeen and to today, so that two thousand dollar property tax home in two thousand and sixteen would end up paying twenty-four hundred ninety-two dollars with this proposed budget. So that increase works out to be about twenty-four point six percent increase in in taxes over that time period. If I compare that to a Big Mac, and the reason I use that is Big Mac is a is a commodity that's global, that McDonald's is a very good company. They know how to manage their costs. They know how to, you know, they they know how to provide a consistent product that's well-received. A Big Mac in Ontario cost four dollars and sixty cents in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and twenty-two, it, you know, costs six dollars and fifty cents. It's a forty-one point three percent increase. We're not even increasing it at the same rate of growth as a Big Mac. If I look at another source, if I look at minimum wage, in two thousand and sixteen, minimum wage was eleven twenty-five. In two thousand and twenty-two, it's fifteen fifty. It's a thirty-eight percent increase in minimum wage. What we're asking for here is an increase that is, you know, compares very well to that, even with a large ten percent increase. And even with that, we have like increased our service levels dramatically since two thousand and sixteen. So it's not just that we're not keeping up. We're actually doing more than than inflation. We're providing more than that. So I think staff has done a really good job. I think council has done a really good job at maintaining value for the residents. So when I look at the budget overall, we have a competitive tax rate. We have low user fees, which I'm going to talk about in a subsequent slide, and we have very high service levels. So when I look at that, I I believe when you take the cost and you put it over what you're getting, we we deliver very good value. You know, I'm going to take off my CAO hat for a second. You know, sometimes I've been told I'm a cold-hearted accountant, and I can execute on a whole bunch of stuff, you know, and maybe, maybe some of that's true, maybe, maybe I'm not that bad. But when I look at a budget, you know, to me, a budget is a tool for what you want the city to be. What you, services do you want delivered? So if I'm a resident in Niagara Falls, what's the kind of city that I want? Is it the city that, you know, has great services, delivers it at a good cost? And the tone that you set in the budget and in your service levels, you know, has a trickle-down effect, and I'm going to explain that just slightly. So when you have a mindset here, and we've had new, we've had staff join from other municipalities, and one of the things they comment on is how great our service levels and our service attitude is. And I'll give a couple of examples, and that's because we have a budget that we can do those things, and we put service level at a priority here in Niagara Falls. So this council last week debated social services. And we spend a lot of money providing grants to very good agencies. They all stood up here and said what they delivered. Most municipalities don't do that. Most municipalities will say, not my, not my circus, not my monkeys. I'm not in the social service game. I'm not, I'm not funding a food bank to that degree. This council, for years, said, no, it's my community. We're going to pay that money to to create the community that I want. That's in the budget. It's very easy for me to say, it's not a core service. I can cut that. I can drop four hundred thousand dollars from the budget, save point, whatever Tiffany can tell me, point, point six percent of of the budget levy, but council has never chosen that path. You know, and because of that type of attitude, it has an impact on staff. When Christmas Day called and and the region said, I need staff to cover it off. I paid for some staff to go. I got some volunteers. I can tell you that didn't happen in every city. We had a cat stuck stuck in a tree for two days in a storm last week, and I sent my, I sent my forestry guy up because the SPCA didn't, he was so high up. The SPCA couldn't get to the, you know, couldn't get to the cat. You know, there would be other cities that say, listen, we don't do that. The cat found his way up. Cat's going to have to find his way down. We don't do that because that's the kind of service level that we have. But there's a cost to that service level going forward, and that's why budgets are important. It sets the tone going forward of what kind of municipality that you want. So I'll take my, I'll put my CEO hat back on for the for the rest of the slides. And even though I think we do a great job, my staff can tell you I'm never satisfied with it. There are areas of improvement that I want to see moving forward. I want council support as we investigate these areas of improvement. So the first one up is field fees cost. All our fields that we have out there, all our baseball, our soccer fields, we generate about forty-six thousand dollars in total revenue, and a big chunk of that is actually for the lights, for the hydro cost. If I compare that to Coannis Field and St. Catherine's, that field alone, that one field alone generates more in revenue at fifty thousand dollars. Our adult baseball team in Niagara Falls pays a hundred and eighty dollars a year for the team. Our adult baseball team in Niagara Falls pays $180 a year for the team. If that team wasn't well and they'd be paying $525 for a field with no lights, $700 for a field with lights. I'm okay with having low fees. It just, we have to be, we have to understand what the balance is. And I think the balance for field costs has gone too far one way. It's been, it's been kept so low that it's, it's, we're sacrificing other maybe higher priorities for that. There's always an argument that says, we want to keep our fees low because we want kids to play sports. I'm a former, you know, bad athlete. I'm a former coach. I encourage sports. But it's not the city of Niagara Falls that is doing that. There's a staff member in the room, I won't point him out. His kid's playing travel soccer in Niagara Falls. They're paying over $3,000 for one child to play travel soccer. Almost none of that money is coming to the city. You know, a house league player and playing baseball is paying $200, $9 comes to the city. That kid's paying, that team is paying more for a hat or a shirt or one baseball costs nine bucks. But you can't play baseball without a field. You can't play soccer without a field. Those are core to the game and we should get some level of repayment so that we can maintain, not just for the kids today, but frankly, for the kids 10, 20 years down the road. So, we need to become reasonable with our fields cost. Fire costs, it's our single largest expenditure. What Niagara Falls is experiencing is no different than every community across Canada. Costs are increasing, equipment costs are increasing. The, the National Fire Chief Association wrote a letter to the federal government saying, we need, you know, to address some of these issues. I don't have the solutions for, for fire costs, but you know, what I want to see is that our chiefs and our union get together with management and figure out ways that we, you know, start to curve some of these costs to the taxpayer, but also potentially drive other benefits to, you know, to the residents of Niagara Falls. You know, could we do more? The chief has been very good. You know, we're one of the few, you know, few fire forces out there that have naloxone. They'll, they'll give injections, they'll do that. Are there other things we can do with those resources to increase the good to the community and drive more value? You know, I'm open for that, but we need to work together to find some of those solutions. And it's a tough problem to have and, and, you know, we need to work on that for next year and the years to follow. And we may have to get the province involved and other people involved to fix it because, like I said, it's not just a Niagara Falls issue. You know, we need to squeeze more out of our assets. Our finance team is already looking to change our investment portfolio to increase rates of return and decrease risk. We also have other assets like surplus real estate assets or, or real estate assets that's not really maximizing return. We need to, we need to ensure we get the most we can out of everything we have. Helping residents who need it most. We, staff have contemplated a proposal where we, we currently have a tax grant program for those on guaranteed income supplement or Ontario disability support program where we give $80 per year to applicants for that. There's about 1,100 applicants that apply for that for their property taxes. $80 is not a significant amount of revenue to keep someone in their home. So, one of the things that staff floated was the idea of doing a tax deferral where we are able to give more money to the resident, let's say $250 per year. But instead of a grant, it's a tax deferral. So, what that means is we reduce their property taxes by $250 and we do that for, you know, as long as they're in their home. And when they sell the home, that money comes back to the taxpayer. So, we help them out when they need it and when they actually have the money, it comes back to the taxpayer. So, that would reduce the impact of the tax levy. I went and spent about over, a little over an hour with the seniors committee with Counselor Campbell that was there. I threw it up as an exploratory balloon. I was half betting that I'd get tossed out on my ear, to be quite frank. But we had a great, we had a great debate on the issue and surprisingly, I left the building and they put a supportive motion on the table to explore it. They're very interested in it. With this size tax increase, you know, we may be able to get this done this year to provide more support for those in the lowest income brackets to deal with the large tax increase. And I'd like to, you know, work on that to get it done. Realistically, I told them it would be the following year, but maybe we can roll up our sleeves and get it done even quicker. A few other items. One of the Shark Tank items was to increase lean training for staff. We're going to do that. We're going to continue on with Shark Tank. We're going to get more ideas out of that. And on the agenda today, there's a grant revenue proposal. You know, there's, there's agencies out there that will get us more grant revenue. Grants come from all different areas and you have to write them very well to be able to get success with them. We've used grant agencies in the past to increase our success rate. And there's one out there that has a pretty good program and that's a decision so that we can increase revenue from other sources that way. So, overall, I think we've positioned ourselves well with this budget. I know council will have lots of questions on it. It helps us catch up and staff knows that it doesn't end today. We need to do more work on, on some issues going forward. So, with that, I'm going to wrap up my presentation. Our treasurer, Tiffany Clark, is here to answer any questions or I can answer any questions. And then we'd like to move to the, to the staff recommendations that were outlined in the schedule. And I think it's important to kind of go through those one-on-one as the chair sees fit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burgess. And I know that this is a little bit different in the sense that we haven't actually introduced the operating budget yet. So, with that said, perhaps we'll just move on to 5.4 F2023-03, which is the proposed 2023 tax-supported operating budget. And I can let Ms. Clark go through her presentation and then I can take questions from any council members.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have an additional presentation on top of Jason's, but, or Mr. Burgess, but I was hoping we could go through those budget options. I just don't know if council has any questions for the CAO first, or do we want to dig into the budget options?
Okay. Let's see. I know I have Counselor Loco that has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some questions and then I'll, I'll have some comments later on. I guess through the chair to Mr. Burgess. On your slides, it talks about the city sidewalk bylaw. I know we talked about it and we said we wanted to put out a survey to see what residents thought about it. Do we have the information back? Did we put out that survey?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. Staff do have the results of the survey. We're just in the process of packaging that up and revisiting that so we can bring more information back to council. We just didn't want to do that in the middle of the election nor do we want to do that while we're in the middle of a snow season either. So, we'll be coming back with that in a month or two.
Okay. That would be very helpful in considering whether we want to put a bylaw in or not. And I guess my next question on that was, would our bylaw enforcement be able to handle that capacity if we were to put in a bylaw, sidewalk clearing bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Those conversations did occur in the initial stages. However, the game has changed significantly with some of our homelessness pressures. So, we'd like the opportunity to revisit that with Ms. Dolch and Mr. Spencer.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the pool, closing the two pools.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the two pool closures, the one, what would be the, like, it's 65,000 per pool that we would save for operating. And the one is to demolish it and put a pickleball court on it and the other one was to demolish it and repurpose it. What are, what are the costs going to be to demolish it, put the pickleball court, demolish it and repurpose it? And then for the Lions one, I think in 2019, we just spent 200,000 in repairs. And my understanding is the Lions club do not want to move forward with the operations of it. What are the costs moving forward?
Thank you. I'll start the question and Ms. Moldenhauer will come in after. There's two costs that council has to keep in mind. There's the one pool is at a state of repair that would need to put over a million dollars worth of repairs in just to make it functioning for the pool again. So, so part of that is to avoid those costs. We would take some of those savings and reinvest it. Before we put any asset in though, we would want to test that out against the recreational plant and we'd have to do community consultation. So, even though we say pickleball, that's more of an idea, not a firm idea because these are neighborhood areas and we'd want to consult with the users of that, what is the best asset in there. So, so both would get a different type of asset into it. And so, we would bring back, we'd bring back, you know, more, more information at that time, but really from a, from a, but that's more of a capital issue than a, than a levy issue. So, we've conservatively estimated at $65,000 per, per pool, but I'll let Ms. Moldenhauer add anything that I missed.
Thank you. Through the chair. With the two pools, the approximate savings for operating would be 65,000 like per pool. If we do close two pools, there are additional savings in labor because at the present time, we do have a staff crew of four people that maintain the outdoor pools. So, therefore, if you're going from five pools down to three pools, you do not need that team of four. They can be maintained by two people. So, we do have an additional savings of approximately 75,000, like if you did the two pool for operations and plus the labor, you're almost near 200,000 in operating. If I could just clarify with Niagara Falls Lions pool, the Niagara Falls Lions pool is maintained and operated by city staff. We do however have a lease agreement with Alliance. They do have their clubhouse at that site. So, we do partner with them and we do communicate to them about what's happening in the park. And I have met with them and I did mention to the club that, you know, there could be the possibility that we may be closing the pool. And they were supportive of that. They understood and they commented that they could definitely see the decrease in swimmers over the last 10 years. And we can see that at all of our pools. And that's one of the reasons we really believe that we can go from five swimming pools down to three and still have the capacity to accommodate everybody in the city. And also, we've got McBain Community Center. So, we do have an, you know, indoors, a year-round pool. So, we believe that we'd still actually be offering a higher level of aquatic services than we did prior to, you know, maintaining and programming McBain, even if we did close two pools.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, at this point, I do have comments on pools for later, but this is more questions? Or are we taking questions now and then comments later?
We are. And I do think that Ms. Clark wants to go through Attachment 15. So, I know she's put it up on the screen now, so.
I'll talk about the pool questions later, pool comments. But I guess what I want to, what I want to focus on is that if we do close those two pools, we're going to save money in operating costs and for labor costs, but we don't know how much it's going to cost to demolish and we don't know what we're going to put in there that would come in a capital budget later on. Is that correct?
That's correct because it would depend on what we put in there. But the one thing we would also know is that we would also have cost avoidance of, of the million-plus dollars to repair the one pool. Also, outdoor pools are just expensive. Everyone who's replacing one knows the cost of it. So, there is an asset management obligation that we would have to also account for. So, if you're retiring a more expensive asset and putting in something that is less expensive, it reduces our future asset management obligation also.
Okay, thank you.
Just to that point, sorry. The asset man, and I don't, like, I, the Lions Club pool, we put, and I know we're going to be talking about this a little bit later, but we put a lot of money in and we saved that pool a couple of years ago. We put all this money into it. And now, to fill it and make it a pickleball court, doesn't make any sense to me. And you're talking about asset management, that's like losing an asset. Why don't we just go with the lifespan of when that pool is done where we don't have to replace any equipment, then close it? And then in the other circumstance, Mitchell said, we have, I, we haven't received a report last year or the year before about how much money this is needed. So, to talk about asset management, we should have had a report years ago about how much this pool is needed. Now, we don't even know if we can patch it up and, and have one more year of it, or does that need the million dollars right now?
Okay. Thank you through, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I know we're going to get into each and every recommendation. I think Ms. Clark is going to go through them. So, appreciate the comments, Counselor Loco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It talked about reduce arena hours. Is the loss of revenue factored into that? If we reduce the arena hours, are we receiving less revenue as well? Is that factored in there?
You mean on the slide that we said, here's some other things you can consider? Yeah, well, listen, every time, every time you rent an hour of ice, you're, you're not, it's not full cost recovery. It costs more to do it. So, if you reduce the arena hours, you know, you, you're still further ahead. Like, if you close an arena, frankly, you'll, you'll increase your budget because arenas cost money to operate. So, if you reduce some of the hours, yeah, you would, you would reduce some revenue, but you'd reduce far more expenses by reducing those hours.
Okay. I just have a couple more specific questions to your presentation and then I'll follow up after Ms. Clark. In a couple of different places, it says that it was 10% plus the 1% levy, but you recommended, recommending another 1% for infrastructure levy. So, really, it's 10 plus 1 plus 1 equals 12? Can I see a note? No, so can, it got confusing there because it said plus 1 increase.
Yeah, so the, I guess it's 10% plus a, plus an additional 1% to the levy. That one, last year, council also put a 1% capital levy on, so it's an additional 1%. So, it's additional to the one that was done last year. So, you would be a 10% levy increase plus an additional 1%, a capital levy increase. So, so next year, when we're looking at our capital levy, there's, it's a 2% levy out there, but the one was already taxed last year.
Okay, so it's really only 11 to the taxpayers right now?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Going on the transit, you talked about a 500,000 contingency because transit has been amalgamated with the region. Is 500 very conservative? Like, if we are looking at cutting things, can we cut that at all? That's a, it's a big number and we don't have transit now. Is it really required?
Thank you. Good question through the chair. There's a future employee benefit liability that actually, if you look at the region document that went through the Transit Commission budget, they actually had that 480-some-odd-thousand dollars in their budget. We informed them that we were covering that. That was what was agreed to. They forgot about it. So, the region was going to bill us over 480-some-odd-thousand anyways. And then we have a few other vacation issues and some other stuff that we just have to tidy up from that. And there's a, there's some existing labor negotiation items that, that are also in that budget. So, the vast majority of it is a check that we have to write to the region or they're just going to tax. But we had budgeted for us to pay for it.
Thank you. But that's the 500,000 that's accurate. Okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll save my other questions until after Ms. Clark's presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor Peta.
Through chair to Mrs. CEO. You're talking about the agencies to find grants for us federally or provincially. How are their fees working out? Are they taking percentage from the grant or is the set fee?
Thank you. Through the chair, the agency that we're looking at, it's two, it's a contingency fee, so you don't pay them anything unless they obtain it. The other one with that company is, unlike some other companies that want to do all the grants, you can assign grants to them. So, we would continue to write the ones that we think we're best at doing and other ones we can have them apply for. The other thing with that agency, the past experience has been sometimes they identify grants that we don't even know are out there because staff have a full-time job doing other things. So, they'll also propose saying, hey, have you heard this, about this grant? So, it is a contingency fee basis. That's why it's a single-source report, but there is no financial implication at this point in time. We hope that there's upside from increased revenue.
Thank you.
Counselor Loco.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't think your microphone is on.
Mine?
Yours, yes. I had some.
I think it is.
Okay, someone texted me that it's not. One more question before we go into the other one. Regarding the fire, I was speaking to the chief about the number of false alarms that we're receiving from our businesses. Apparently, we used to have a bylaw and I asked to see the bylaw. It was done in 2000 and the bylaw has been suspended. So, I wanted to bring it up to, for discussion. I guess we have thousands of false alarm calls that is a cost to city taxpayers. Is there a way to look at that bylaw again for reimbursement? I guess the first one was a warning, the second one was a letter, the third one was I guess the first one was a warning. The second one was a letter. The third one was $300. The fourth one was $500. I'm wondering if we can have a report back on that, if we're looking at some sort of revenue to offset-
I think it's part of Attachment 15, if I'm not mistaken. And I know Ms. Clark is going to get into the presentation. I think it was recommendation number 13.
I missed that. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's in a-
Attachment 15?
Attachment 15, I think on page 85 of the PDF.
What number is it?
On the paper copy?
I have number 13.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it. I was having a conversation with the chief separate of this.
Okay. Lots of information. Any other questions of staff? I'm not sure. Counsel Baldinelli, did you have your hand up?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Okay. If there aren't any other questions, and I know that Ms. Clark has, again, Attachment 15 that she would like to go through as well as some recommendations on our ABCs, the appointments, boards and commissions. So perhaps Ms. Clark, if you want to start with Attachment 15, then counsel can go through these individually. And I would guess that any motions would be made in principle at this point and then to be ratified next week. So.
Through the chair. I've put this attachment up on the screen, but knowing that it's going to look really tiny, I did include printouts at your desk. So hopefully, everybody's able to follow along. It's also, of course, on the agenda in Report F 2023-03 as Attachment 15. So we've kind of covered the pool. I think Ms. Mouldenhauer, Mr. Burgess did a good job. We are recommending the closure of two pools, both the Niagara Falls Lions and E.E. Mitchellson. So staff have that listed at $65,000 of savings for each pool right now. And as Ms. Mouldenhauer just mentioned, actually, and it's not reflected in this sheet, if you do agree to close both pools, there's an additional approximately 75,000 that could be added to the budget savings. So each of those results in a levy decrease of 0.08%.
Okay. So I'm going to want to take these individually. If anyone would like to put a motion on the floor for number one, feel free to do so. Again, it will, it will be in principle to be ratified. Yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I did take the liberty of drafting some motions as a starting point that perhaps counsel wants to work off of.
Okay. I'll leave it up to counsel. That's bound Counselor Coco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess now would be the time, instead of putting the motion forward, to have some discussion on this specific motion.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, great. I looked at the figures for 2021 and 2022 for each of the pools. And we have the four pools, Lions, Mitchellson, Chippewa and Prince Charles. If we remove Mitchellson and Lions Club pools, there are no pools to service anywhere from Valley Way to the whole north end of the city. And then if we look at the other end of the city, we have Mitchellson in between Drummond and Dorchester and then the McBains. So we have two very close there. And then we have Chippewa, which is in a more distant location. So we can't look at Chippewa either. But if you look at Mitchellson and the Lions, the Lions Club in the two years had more swimmers than any of the other pools. And then Mitchellson was a third. So I'm really concerned about us closing a pool and not having anything for the residents in that side of the city. I understand about the repairs and like Counselor Strange said, we really need to see those repairs before we can make a decision like what really needs to be done, how much, how quickly. That goes back to asset management. I'm really having a difficulty with these pool closures. I understand that we have to cut things. I understand that we are above average, but closing something that we already have, that's a big decision for us to make. And, okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Counsel Strange.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Yeah. And, and like I said before, like how do we get to that point at Mitchellson where we need all this repair? Usually with the Lions Club, we knew a few years back, say, listen, we either make, make these changes now or we're going to have to close a pool. So we made the changes. So I, you know, it doesn't make sense for me anyways to close Lions Club when we just put all that infrastructure in there. You know, let it, you know, if we're talking about asset management, let, let the lifespan of that equipment last as long as it can. And it's still serving. I think it was 7,000 users last year. I grew up just around the blocks. We used to ride my bike, you know, down and swim there. And then the winter, we used to skate on the skating rink then. So fond memories there. And I can't imagine closing that and then you're closing Mitchellson. And then you have, you know, nowhere in between for these, for these young kids or adults, families coming and swimming. And it's not a, you know, as far as our operating, it's 0.08% each pool. So it's not much. And it's, and it's something that, yeah, you know, we're going to probably see it close in a few years, but I don't want to see it close right now without the information that we need. Can Mitchellson last another year without putting that equipment in? And then possibly if it can, keep these open till next year. Maybe let's get some feedback from the neighborhood, a survey wherever it may be within a certain parameter and say, would you rather have a pool here? Would you rather have a pickleball court here? Or whatever you want to put that pool into or keep it as a splash pad, wherever it is. But I would really like to hear some feedback from some residents because, you know, if you get a really hot, hot summer and they don't have that, you know, what are they supposed to do? And, and, you know, they have to go down to the one pool at the other end or on the other side or go into, and all, drive all, or ride their bikes all the way to McBain? It's, it's, I don't think it makes sense to me. And, and, you know, we keep these pools. We know they don't make money. We have, you know, we're doing free lifeguard lessons or lifeguard lesson at McBain. For what? Because we need lifeguards at these pools. It's giving kids a job. And like I said, I have fond memories. People have jobs and, and, you know, Wayne Thompson was a lifeguard back in the day at some of these pools. So, you know, it's, stems back from, from back then. So I know compared to other communities, we're probably higher and have more pools. But I think we keep this for the enjoyment of, of our residents.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Strange. I also have Counsel Baldinelli who asked me. He has a question. It's difficult to see him right now because we're sharing the screen.
Can he drink a margarita?
Yeah. Or Ms. Clark, Ms. Clark is sharing the screen. So-
My question is based on the spreadsheet we had with past expenses for repairs on pools, which I looked into, I would like to understand where the $1 million came from to, for the repair. Was there a tender put out for someone to go up and take a look at? Because some of the expenses for some of the items you had, you're grossly overcharged and I have a feeling that you're having the same thing with this specific repairs on these pools. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. We'll see if we can get the answer for you. I'm not sure how the amount was, was come to, nor do I believe that counsel was notified.
Through, through, through the chair of counsel. First, I just want to state, you know, staff have trouble with these cuts. So, you know, we, we're putting options forward to counsel because we understand the financial implication to the taxpayer. So none of these cuts are looked upon with ease by, by staff. The issue with the one pool is during the election period where counsel was non-active, we had to do some emergency repairs at that pool. So we had authorized some emergency repairs on, on the pool. You know, part of this was to bring non, like the non-core asset management plan together to provide further information. We also had a claim on that pool because of uneven cement. So we had a liability claim, insurance claim on that pool. Staff, when we were looking at some of the condition stuff during it and because of the claim, started to look at how we would have to address those issues. When you start digging into it, there was further issues that came. There was, to Counsel Baldinelli's question, there was not a tender. This is internal estimate by staff with regards to, so it's an, you know, order of magnitude kind of estimate. We would scope out that work and put it out for, for tender if, if counsel so, so desired. But the, you know, at the end of the day, these are, these are pools near the end of their life. At the end of the day, pools only last so long and then you have to do a major refit on it. I've had the experience in another community. Once you start changing filtration systems and that to bring everything up to code, you're ripping everything out and bringing in new pools to refresh. The positive thing is then they'll refresh for 20 years because you've, you've reworked the pool. But because of that issue, we decided to say, before you spend significant dollars, do you want to consider cutting it to get the service level back in line? And as Counsel, or sorry, as Ms. Mouldenhauer said, if you're closing one pool, if you close a second pool to get us back into the service line, there's additional savings to it. So that's why the two were suggested. And that's why, but because of the difficulty, we wanted to separate it out. So you can deal with one because one requires significant repairs. The other one is really a service level normalization to do it. You know, you know, I'll take the blame for not notifying counsel, you know, of the emergency repair at the time. I just wanted to keep the pool open. You know, staff are always nervous during elections to have anything hit, you know, any operational items hit the newspaper because it's unfair to the incumbent counselors who are, are running. So we just did the emergency repair to keep everything moving. And we knew that this was going to come through a deeper asset evaluation. But these pools, when we do our non-core, you'll get an assessment on all these pools and their life expectancy and what the asset management costs will be going forward. Unfortunately, that won't happen till later this year. I don't know if I've missed anything, Ms. Mouldenhauer?
Thank you. Just to address some of the council's questions, regarding the attendance and numbers, we include pool attendance and lessons as well. This summer, we only offered lessons at Mitch and Lions, and that is one of the reasons their numbers are higher. If the pools weren't operating, obviously, we'd have lessons probably running out of FH Leslie and Prince Charles. With respect to the repairs at our pools, the last time we did an audit on the pools and on their, their condition was back in 2015. And that's where that list of repairs, the items that we have spent money on the last eight years, that's where the repairs were generated from. And with that audit, only the pool was looked at. We didn't look at the building. And I don't know if people have visited our pools and our buildings recently. They're in bad shape. We really have not invested a lot of money into our buildings. And as our CIOs, Jason just said, they're coming to the end of their life. Chippewa is our newest pool. So obviously, it's in our best shape. But the others were built like in the 60s and in the 70s. And they, it's, they're in sad shape. So we really do need to make a decision, if not tonight, we need to make it in the next couple of years, of where we're going with our pools and how much money do we truly want to invest in a 10-month operation? As staff, I'm a former lifeguard. I love pools. I spent so many years at pools. But I understand we need to spend the money on our indoor pool at McBain. It's a beautiful pool that we can use throughout the year. This is a two-month operation. We get maybe eight to 10 weeks max out of our pools. So it is a hard decision. I, I can sympathize with everybody with your questions. I do have our manager of facilities and operations, Travis Jeffrey, kind of on standby because we knew there were going to be some questions about Mitchellson pool and the repairs that are required immediately. And we have discussed, you know, could we operate that pool this summer? We really feel right now, due to safety reasons, we cannot. But I think Travis is there. And if he could join in our conversation in our meeting, hi Travis, he can provide you some overview details, other repairs that are required at Mitchellson pool.
Hi, good evening. Through the chair. Thank you. There's extensive work required to bring this facility up to a safe and accessible standard for both staff and/or visitors. The facility was, you know, was constructed about 50 years ago. And with the exception of a pool liner due to a cracked concrete basin and skimmers, grills to be installed on the skimmers for health and safety reasons, it has received minimal capital investment in the past 10 to 20 years. With the short operating season that this facility has, past practice included many patches to get through another year of operation. Unfortunately, with that method of repair, it allowed the facility to reach a state that required significant work and investment to return it to an appropriate service level. So the current state of the property includes multiple health and safety and accessibility concerns. The big ticket item for this property is the pool deck. There's multiple trip passages throughout the concrete pool deck in this location. And there's evidence of subbase failure that's also occurred throughout the pool deck, which creates sharp edges and uneven transitions between adjacent panels. There's also hollow voids under multiple sections of the pool deck, which indicate further slab failures imminent in this case. There's been some patches to try and reduce the moisture and water erosion of that subbase using sealant in the cracks. But with the excessive movement of that slab, we're seeing further movement and, and subbase failure. So when we go to replace pool deck, it's important to consider other aspects of it, including the inspection and replacement of the drain and return lines for the pool. For pulling up the concrete pool deck, we want to make sure those, that infrastructure is replaced or at least assessed in good condition before we tackle with concrete again and potentially have to cut it up and remove it in the future. Additionally, with the, the pool deck, there's the grounding under, under slab grounding, the lifeguard stations. There's quite a bit of corrosion on the steel lifeguard station, which would be replaced as part of that process as well. And when we look at the facility, it's currently not accessible. The exterior grades is one step below the floor slab and does not allow for barrier-free access to the facility or to the pool. So when doing the pool deck, we would want to consider that and raise sections of the pool deck to improve accessibility. Additionally, to the pool deck, there's concerns around health and safety in the mechanical room. So it currently houses the pool chemicals, the pump filters, the main electrical service and plastic hot water heater. Vapor over the years from the chemical has caused increased corrosion of a lot of the electrical equipment in that space and the hot water tank, which creates, you know, potential fire in electrical houses. So additionally to that, there's Burt's faulting on the edge of the pool deck on the side of the building. It's flaking off and causing sharp edges against the edge of the pool deck. And there's quite a number of repairs here. It's not simply one component. There's a number of components that tie into the overall repairs. And I think if we're going through this process, we would be a risk if we didn't include the accessibility issues and upgrade it to accommodate that during these repairs.
Okay, thanks Travis. I'll-
Sorry, without being, so that, you know, do the decreased correct utilization rates and trying to focus our money on the, the assets that we're, sorry, we're trying to take the capital funding and spread it across too many pools at the moment. And we need to focus and be strategic about applying that funding to the pools that we wish to maintain.
Okay. Thanks Travis. I have a few speakers. So if you just want to hang on the line, I'm not sure if there are questions for you or if there are questions for other staff. So I have Counsel Thompson, Patel and LaCoco.
Very difficult decision regarding the budget. And this two and a half years have been the pandemic and really has affected everybody and, and particularly in Niagara Falls. I remember the casino giving us the $26 million. Are you thinking about things coming back and the tourism coming here? And we should get a lot of money. And we should get a lot of money with the COVID getting over this season. Have you talked about that? Have you given any thinking about that?
Through the chair to the Counselor, we've increased the OLG revenue slightly, but not back to the days of
No, I'm talking about when the season starts, April, May, June.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've increased OLG revenue coming in, so we expect some increase in our OLG
Is that going to help what we're dealing with right now?
It helps a little bit, but not, that's factored into the 10%. So we've increased revenue by 400,000. I'm looking at Tiffany.
Through the chair, we increased the casino revenue just by 200,000. However, that's transferred out to capital. We have maintained the tax subsidy.
I'm not talking about now. I'm talking when we get back to normal with the season.
Yeah, I don't, one of the concerns we have, staff have with the casino revenue is that with online gaming and with Woodbine opening up, whether our casino revenue will ever get back to where it was before.
I think people want to come to a facility and they want to come to Niagara Falls. So, and anyway, I think that's an opportunity. The other thing is the 500,000 for the transportation going to the region. And I think that I have always looked at the buses and there's, and we have to provide transportation for people don't have cars and jobs and whatever. But every time I go by a bus, has there ever been a study? There's two or three people in a huge, not the we-go, but the other ones. That's unbelievable.
Through the chair to the Counselor. Oh, I thought I did, oh, sorry. Through the chair to the Counselor, ridership levels were down in transit in 2021 and 2022 due to COVID. They're bouncing back. The new, the new commission, which Counselor Campbell sits on, will provide annual reports back to each of the municipalities. So at this point in time, I can say that transit was experiencing a decrease. You have to look at the buses, though. There's peak time for buses. We have a lot of students that use our buses at certain times and, you know, that, you know, some of those are quite busy and then there's other times, you know, at the end of the day, you can't run a bus for only two hours. You have to kind of have regular shifts. But the new Niagara Falls, or sorry, the new Niagara Transit Commission will provide a report back to Counsel, each of the Counselors, I think, on an annual basis, I believe is the understanding.
And the other thing, I'm thinking about revenue. I brought up probably six months ago about four or five people were asking me about Drummond Road beside the Stamford to put an apartment. And we have all kinds of property. And what if we put all these on the opportunity for people to buy them and put buildings and taxes? And that would certainly the national, the cost of the properties. Is that an opportunity?
Through the chair to the Counselor, yes, that specific property that you mentioned, staff are looking at the zoning on that to, and a process to put it out to the market. But yeah, we're looking at all our surplus properties. It's one of the things we need to take away. Unfortunately, we don't have a real estate department at the city of Niagara Falls, so we may need to hire someone to run that program. But it is on our list to do if Counsel endorses staff's comments.
I think that would really make a huge change in the pressure about this budget. Yeah. And with you talking about the budget, I have to tell you that that is the best opportunity I've heard in 50 years regarding the budget. I thank your boards really right on. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Burgess. And he has been around for 50 budgets. Counselor Patel, you're up next.
To Chair, I agree with Counselor Strange when it comes to the Lyons Club Pool. We have put money in there, and that's the only operating pool right now in this side of the city because Westingrill's Club and McBain Center is in South End. So people might not have access to cars or we don't have transit that runs that takes them from one end of the city to another end. And 7,200 people using that pool in two months, that's a big number. And if they're using it for swimming lessons, that makes it more important to keep it open because we need to keep it open and kids do need those swimming lessons. So I would say until we can use that pool until the end of the life, we should use that pool. And $65,000 to operate a pool, that's not a big number compared to the budget we are dealing with. That's a fraction of the cost. So I would agree with Counselor Strange to keep the Lyons Club Pool open for now.
Okay. Counselor Lukoko, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really have a difficulty with this one because we're forced to make a decision on two pools that we haven't had a lot of information on. I think we really need a further report detailing all of this so we can make it. So listening to all of this, we have the North End that's not going to get serviced at all. We have pools that have been not maintained and money and resources not to put towards, and I'm not blaming anyone. It's all of our fault. We're all to blame. There's a commercial on TV right now about the Scarborough Hospital, about a gentleman saying, you know, less money goes to my hospital that's close to me, less wages goes to this hospital. I'm just as important as anybody else in the city. Why is my hospital getting less money? And that's how I sort of feel about these pools. And some of the comments we heard about the ones we wish to maintain, focus on the pools that we want, that's pushing all of the residents to the South End where we have an indoor pool and we have Prince Charles. So I really think it's unfair that we're trying to push everybody to the South End and not servicing the North End. I think what I'd like to see, and I'm a little confused about what we're going to do because Counselor Strange's motion was that we not make any decisions until next week, but now we have motions up on the screen. So are we passing motions on this? Or are we waiting till next week?
I think it's appropriate to pass motions in principle and then they can be ratified by Counsel.
Okay, then I'll put a motion on the floor that we keep the two pools open until, for this year, until we get a complete report about the condition, the cost, what it's going to cost for the following year, about what we're going to put into those pools as well. We don't want to just demolish them and have empty space with nothing on it. But I'd like a very detailed report. So that would be my motion.
Okay. Yep.
You know, that was all agreement, but aggregate, yes? Oh, sorry.
I was in total agreement of keeping both pools open. Then I heard Travis talk about the condition of Mitchelson and like people, we don't need another lawsuit on our hands either. And after him saying what's going on there, we don't need someone, oh, I'll just go up and flip across this cement when I go now that the pool's open. And it's like, oh, my God, this is a gold mine. You know what I mean? So unless we do some work on the pavement or something, just to level those off, because I don't think it's safe. So I think legally, I don't know if we can open that, if we're getting a lawsuit or someone hurting themselves. Like the Lyons Club, 100%, I want to keep that open, but I don't want to put the municipality in danger by having a lawsuit against us because some kid falls. Is there, is there an estimate that we can, just the surrounding of the pool, if we can get that fixed, would we know how much that would cost and just keep it until next year that we can decide what we want to do with it? I don't know.
Through the chair, the, you know, there's a difference between keeping it open and not closing it. So what we can do is, it's not staff's recommendation to open it and, because of health and safety until we can get a more fulsome study on it. If Counsel wants to not close that pool permanently, my suggestion to Counsel is that you direct staff to get a formal, either formal quotes or put the work out, and then you can then, you know, make a budget amendment then for the capital cost of that. But I just want to be clear, from staff's point of view, we're not opening that pool because of some of the health and safety issues attached to that pool. That would be for the 2023 season. That doesn't mean that for 2024, if Counsel approves the appropriate repairs to it, that you can then not open it up. So I just want to be clear, you know, from a staff point of view, we have certain obligations in staff that we can't do things that are unsafe. So, you know, the best we could probably do is get a more formal quote to you, but I don't want to set any false expectations out there that the pool would be open because I think from staff's point of view, we can't open that pool this year until we do the necessary repairs. But what we can do is bring a report back to do it, which would include the appropriate budget to open it up. And if Counsel wants to make that decision subsequently, we'll take that direction.
So I think your comments lend to the Counselor's motion, which is that we not approve the closures of both pools until staff bring back a detailed report estimating the cost of the repairs and also the cost of repurposing.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct it because I think she said keep open, which is slightly different than not close. And that's why I stressed the difference between that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. CIO. So yes, the motion that is up there is to not close them. So as long as we're all in the same boat and then get a report back and specifically for Mitchelson to find out what it would take to open it, but we're not going to close them. And I'd like a recorded vote on this, please.
Yeah, okay. So if Tiffany, just if you could share the screen again, unless everyone has the page in front of them. The motion that is part of Attachment 15 says that Counsel approved the closure. So we would just say that Counsel not approve the closure of the Niagara Falls Lyons Outdoor Pool located at, and then subject to, subject to a report coming back to Counsel that would detail any future expenditures?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a second here for that motion. So we'll take number, do you want them together or separated?
Separate better.
Separate, then that's fine.
Separate is better? Okay, all right. So we'll take number one first, and this deals with the Lyons Club Pool. A recorded vote has been requested, so I will ask the clerk to take that.
So just going alphabetically.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I have some comments before the motion.
Yep, just on this. To be clear, sorry, we're voting, this is operating. So regardless, what I just heard the CIO say through your chair is, we can't open Mitchelson this summer anyway.
This one is on Lyons first.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, if you want to talk
But we were talking about pools.
Yeah, if you want to talk about Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah, so that one, but it's in, it's on here as an anticipated revenue savings. We're not opening anyway, so it's already happening, is it not, through your chair?
Through, through the, it's a good, it's a good point, but it wouldn't be a sustainable savings. So yeah, it would be a one-time savings, but if you choose to open it up, then we're just increasing taxes next year for a decision that was made. So we would just eliminate the savings from it, but we want to, I don't want to play the game of I put $65,000 in my pocket knowing I might have to take it out again and just raise taxes next year. So we, for $65,000, I'd rather just keep it in the budget and go from there. On the other pool, though, you know, I think we just need direction of not closing, like keeping it open and spending the $65,000, not waiting for the report to come back, would be on the Lyons Club Pool. We'd want direction. My assumption is you guys want to open that pool and not have $65,000. Because I don't think we'll be able to get a report back in time before the summer season comes. So we'd get the report as quickly, but we have to hire staff and do all that stuff. We would, Mitchelson is closed for this year. We won't hire staff for that one. But for Lyons, I think we would just be going ahead with it for at least one more year, and then we can deliver the report more fulsomely.
So to the mover of the motion then, Counselor Lukoko. I don't know if you want to reamend it or just say something to the effect that Counsel not approve the closure of the Niagara Falls Lyons Outdoor Pool and continue with its use?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Because it's not going to be attached to a report.
Yes, that one's fine. So we're keeping the pool open for use in 2023, correct?
Okay. Second? Yep, okay. Counselor Campbell.
So we're keeping the Lyons We're keeping the Lyons Pool open, but the Mitchelson is deemed to be closed.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet. We're going to split the, we're going to split the motion so that we only deal with the Lyons Club first.
So this first vote is strictly for the Lyons?
The motion that's on the floor is to keep the Lyons Club Pool open.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before I have Mr. Mattson call the recorded vote? No? Okay, Mr. Mattson, you're up.
I'm going to start with Counselor Baldinelli.
In favor.
Counselor Campbell.
In favor.
Counselor Lukoko.
In favor.
Counselor Patel.
In favor.
Counselor Peter Angelo.
In favor.
Counselor Strange.
In favor.
Counselor Thompson.
In favor.
And Mayor Diodati.
Four.
And that's unanimous.
Okay, so the second motion then deals with the Mitchelson Pool. And the motion would be that Counsel not approve the closure of Mitch until a detailed report is brought back to Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Everyone understand?
Yeah. I just want, there is a splash pad as well, right?
At Mitch, there is.
Right beside, so then at least we know that if, for some chance, we can't do the repairs this year and opens, at least there's a splash pad for those hot days.
Yeah, through the chair. At all of our outdoor pools, we do have a splash pad, and the mechanical systems are not connected. So depending upon what we do in the future, we would still always have, until we needed to replace them, the splash pad there in place. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Diodati.
And my only other question about the trip hazard, is that a matter of hydraulic jacking? Is that what we need to be doing there? Through your chair.
I'll turn it over to the expert. Hydraulic jacking works in certain situations, and we have used hydraulic jacking in certain situations, but in other applications, it doesn't work and it doesn't last as long. And I think there's underlying base issues that are also challenged, but Travis is, Travis is better prepared. I assume he's crossing my fingers he's still on the line.
Yes, through the chair. So we explored this option of hydraulic jacking, the existing concrete there. There's two major concerns with that, one being that the initial settlement is due to water erosion. So with the material that gets injected through the hydraulic jacking process, it isn't a water-resistant or water erosion resistant material. So it will continue to corrode over time. The second issue with it is the existing slab, the structural integrity of it has been compromised in a number of locations. So the panel has cracked between the sockets and between the existing control joints throughout the pool deck. Through hydraulic jacking, there's approximately inch and a quarter hole that gets drilled through the concrete to inject the ground material below. In doing so, you risk additional cracking and damage to the slabs throughout the pool deck using that process. So we explored it, this staff didn't recommend. So we explored it, this staff then recommended use of that method for this application.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we call the motion?
Just a recorded vote, please.
Everyone understands the motion? Okay. Turn it over to Mr. Mattson.
Councillor Baldenelli.
In favor.
Councillor Campbell.
In favor.
Councillor LaCoco.
In favor.
Councillor Patel.
In favor.
Councillor Peter Angelo.
In favor.
Councillor Strange.
In favor.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati.
For.
And that is unanimous.
Next recommendation, number three. Ms. Clark, I don't know if you want to go through it or?
Yes. So through the chair, our next recommendation surrounds the museum's summer hours reduction. So we have two museums battle, well, we have more than two, the two in question here are Battleground and Willoughby Museum. They operate solely in the summer season through the use of students, and our museum staff has suggested they can attempt to reduce some of the operating hours at each of the locations to try to save $10,000 in staffing costs. So this is something that interests council. I did prepare a draft motion here that council approve a reduction in museum hours at the Battleground and Willoughby Museums, estimated to reduce expenditures by $10,000.
Okay. I believe I have a motion from Mayor Diodati to approve the recommendation. Is there a second, seconded by Councillor Strange? Anyone have any questions or comments? Not, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, moving on to number four.
So this next one would be a revenue generating option. So the Gale Center has dry floor space in the summer, they usually take out one pad of ice. They've suggested that they can reach out and try to gain revenue by utilizing the space for dry floor space rentals, like ball hockey, lacrosse. So that would estimate an additional revenue of $15,000 for 2023. It would be more in 2024, but there's a lot of large repairs happening at the Gale Center during July this year, so we're completely shut down for, I believe it's three or four weeks.
Okay. I have a motion by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Patel, to approve this recommendation in principle and send it to next week's meeting. If there isn't any questions or comments, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Number five.
We're going to skip over number five because we covered that in the parking budget, so staff or council approved in principle the parking reductions, which actually totaled a little bit more than $75,000, they were about $80,000. So in principle, that's been approved, and I've added that to the budget savings chart. So number six is, just a, oh, sorry, number six, council approved January 17th, the social services grant reduction, so, sorry, not a reduction, a reallocation in funding, so we're leaving $150,000 in the levy for the social service grants and complementing the rest of it with OLG funding of $350,000, which was actually a $100,000 increase. Number seven is the next one to deal with, so the spooky awards. We currently budget $6,000, that's for awards or prizes, paid advertising and transportation. Staff is just suggesting they cut this by 50%. Small savings, it would be $3,000.
Okay. Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of residents reached out to me and wondered if we could possibly find a sponsor for this, that the community really enjoyed it. It's not a lot of money, could we find a sponsor?
Through the chair, I'll look at Ms. Molenhauer. We have been trying to get third parties to operate these, and we've had some success. It's something that we can certainly do. Maybe the cut will motivate a sponsor to come forward, so I'll pass it over to.
With this reduction, we would still be operating the spooky awards? What we're proposing, instead of, for example, like a $100 gift card, you would get a $50 gift card. So definitely the spirit of the awards would still be there. We are finding it challenging right now to find sponsors, so if anybody listening would like to sponsor the spooky awards, give me a call, we'd be very interested, so thank you.
Free publicity. Mayor Diodati.
You know, having delivered a lot of the spooky awards, I can tell you, it's very, very popular. People love it. It's more about the bragging rights than anything else, and a lot of them spend thousands of dollars, and it's a community binding thing. To me, we definitely do not want to walk away from community events like this, this is important, it's what we're all about. And I can tell you right now, there are corporate people out there, but you don't, they don't call you, you have to call them, you have to go knock on their door, and you just have to think, and if you ask these people, where do you buy your stuff, you'll know where to go. As an example, Party City and Canadian Tire, you know, as an example, because in return, he's going to get exposure on our website, so it's a good symbiotic relationship. I mean, I'm happy to help out with that. Former council member Chris Dobrowski was heavily involved, and he got us a lot of support in that regard, too. Wouldn't be that hard. I agree, I mean, I'm good for cutting it out of here, but not cutting it at all. To me, that's a, it's a huge event, that, and then the words for the Christmas lights as well. They're popular, whole neighborhoods get in on it. When I go there and the reaction of people in the whole neighborhood, it's unbelievable. They're already this year buying for next year, like they're, it's unbelievable. It's become such a culture, they'll travel to conventions in Las Vegas and other places to get ideas. Like, I can't believe the cult, like I'm so out of, I have my pumpkin with a little light in it, and I'm so out of touch, I can't believe how big it's become. So, anyway, and I'm happy to help out with that through your chair.
Councillor Strange.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I agree with Mayor Jim Diodati. I think it's a great event that we have, and I think people get excited, and you love walking around, I walk around with my dog, and you see these spark awards and the spooky awards, it's awesome. And I thought maybe, instead of giving them cash for awards, maybe just give them something from the, from our municipality, like free skates, free family skates, free swims, whatever we can offer, and maybe we can even reach out to former councillor Chris Dobrowski. I know he does his frightmare event, so maybe he can do passes for some of the winners that'll do for the next year or something like that, so I can hand that off to a former councillor, and maybe he can come up with some tickets and ideas for upcoming spooky awards.
That's a good idea. Councillor Patel.
I agree with Councillor Strange, because most of the people do not do a $400 gift card, it's just for the bragging rights, right? So I think I agree with his idea.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion in support of staff's recommendation? Motion by Mayor Diodati, seconded by Councillor Strange. I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, and motions carried. Okay, the next one, number eight, is advertising at the Gale and McBain Lobbies.
Yeah, through the chair, there's an opportunity to do additional advertising at Gale and McBain Center. We would look to install one or two monitors and work with New Stadia Media. This would probably give us about $10,000 in revenue estimating. And just to be clear, all of these revenue estimates, we did a very conservative estimate, so hopefully we would actually come in higher than we've estimated.
Okay.
We use the election.
So this is another revenue opportunity instead of an actual cut? Anyone like to approve this? Motion by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Patel. I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Okay, number nine.
So this would be a change in scope for beautification, so a contract, so right now we do beautification all around the city, and we're suggesting that we no longer do beautification in the BIA areas, and if this is something the BIA's want to pick up, they could certainly do so. We're saying that would estimate about $20,000 in savings.
Mayor Diodati.
Can I just get a better understanding on how we're going to save money? Is it going to be labor, or do we pay for flowers? What exactly, how would that work out?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have an annual contract for this beautification maintenance, so it's the planting of materials in spring or fall of their bulbs, and then the ongoing maintenance to upkeep weed and water and fertilize those flower beds. We spend about $150,000 annually, so this would be about a 13% reduction in that contract.
So if I could follow up, Chair, and what about places like Five Corners? You know, that's not a BIA, but we've got plantings. So are we talking just specifically the BIA's? And then the next question is, have we had a discussion with any of the BIA's to find out, so we don't have a year of nothing? Because, you know, tulip bulbs are planted the year before, I don't know what we plant, but I'm just wondering if perennials or annuals.
Question.
I sound like I know what I'm talking about, and I don't know actually which ones have come up every year, but I know one of them do.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. This would only include areas that are part of BIA's, because we know part of the BIA's mandate is to provide that level of service in the community. So areas like Five Corners is not part of the BIA, it's not suggested that we delete that. We do know that some of those places have some donated flower bed maintenance as well. Anything that way might be in flight this year, some of the bulb work that we were trying to do on the Lundys Lane area, I'd suggest we want to continue, so this would be a slow phasing in approach of transferring those costs and having those discussions with BIA's. We haven't had that discussion, this is just the first step.
Are there any other questions of staff? Sorry, Councillor Patel.
I would actually agree with transferring the cost, because we can't just let them take care of the area, because we have a team that goes through the city, so we can't have every street pick what they want to do on that street. So that's the only way we can, we can agree with this, if they just bear the cost of the area.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Would you like to make a motion in support of staff's recommendation?
Sure.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councillor Patel, seconded by Councillor Campbell. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Number 10.
Number 10 is requesting a change in splash pad hours. So currently, the splash pads are running from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so about 11 hours, and staff are suggesting that we reduce that to 10:30 AM to 7:30 PM, so nine hours. We estimate this would be about a $10,000 savings in reduction costs, in utility reductions.
Who's the recommendation? So I have a motion by Councillor Campbell, seconded by Councillor Strange. Any questions or comments? Mayor Diodati.
So my only question is, if we have a heat wave, is there some flex in there if we want to add the hours for those extreme hot times?
Through to the chair, yes, we've already discussed that, and for sure we would adjust them, and we're actually looking at installing timers as well, so we could just grab our phone with the app and adjust it that way. So we're going to try out McBain Community Center first, because it's definitely our most utilized splash pad, and our water budget right now is quite high, so we'd like to try to get that down.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to approve staff's recommendation. I'll call the vote, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. Number 11.
Thank you. So number 11 is about adding a license fee to sidewalk cafes. Staff have done a lot of research on this, and we're suggesting $35 per square meter in the license areas. We estimate the savings, or sorry, the additional revenue to be about $30,000.
Okay. Mayor Diodati.
Sorry, I know I have a lot of questions here.
That's what's for.
Now, I just wanted, thank you. Now, we surveyed, it just seemed odd to me, Port Colborne, Wellens, St. Catherine's, and Hamilton, it just seemed kind of, I wondered how we came up with that survey. I just wondered, what's best practices? I don't know, who, when you say, is this economic development staff that looked into, like I feel like I don't know enough about, and per square meter, what's that going to work out to be? I'm still back in metric times here, so what, the average patio, what's it going to cost? You know, I'm still sensitive to businesses are still coming out of the COVID slump, and I'm still sensitive to it, although I do think there are costs and there's expectations that you pay costs. I'd just like to know, can you put us in the ballpark? It seems like we're going right up to, you know, St. Catherine's is 30, it's like we're going from zero to, you know, right where the main thing is, and I'm just wondering if there's any context to that. Thank you, Chair.
Through the chair, that's a suggested fee, we can adjust it based on council. There is a concern of not charging anything, because I think we get into bonusing at that point in time, because we have certain businesses that are using essentially city property and not paying for it, so we need to set a charge, and then we can get a bit more of a rationale to that charge. I think we surveyed the ones that are a bit more active with the, you know, Hamilton has a fairly active sidewalk cafe program, they've been doing it for a lot of years. St. Catherine's has had recent experience over the last few years with their expanded programs. So I'm not sure about Port Colborne, to be quite frank, but those were the two key ones that we wanted to look at.
If I could just ask you, because, sorry, Chair, just to go further, I'm confused by this. I read this as only St. Catherine's charges, am I wrong?
No, I know that some of the other municipalities charge, because you're, the region, for example, sets fees too for, if you're on, when you're encroaching on municipal property, there's usually a charge and requirement to bring insurance to it. A lot of, a lot of communities during COVID, to encourage, you know, compliance with public health, waived on that, but that wasn't under, you know, special circumstances. But no, patio license fees for use of municipal property is pretty common in most municipalities.
So just for clarity, sorry, Chair, but in this, is this saying only St. Catherine's does? Does Hamilton charge too? That's the part I'm just looking for clarity in our report here.
Thank you, Chair, through you, to his worship. Yes, so the other municipalities do charge a fee, I apologize, it is, it does elude almost just that St. Catherine's does, but that's an example of the charge that they, they do charge, and it's similar to what we're requesting at 35, even though they're 38. So we were just kind of providing that comparable based on the charging fee.
Okay. I have a motion by Mayor Diodati to move staff's recommendation. Do I have a second, seconded by Councillor Patel? If there isn't any comments, I'll call the vote. Sorry, Councillor Strange.
Sorry, through you, Chair. So if someone does get this license fee, do they take over the liability to, if somebody's using the sidewalk as their cafe and something happens, do they receive the liability for that after they, is that in that license fee?
Through, they would have to post additional insurance, so there's insurance requirements to be on the property, so that's part of it. And then there's also traffic, traffic has to ensure that there's no site mine violations. There is a fair amount of work to grant one of these things from a public safety point of view, so that, you know, part of the fee recovery is just our time to do that. So hopefully that, they have to carry their own insurance, though.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Okay, a motion by the mayor, seconded by Councillor Patel. I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Number 12.
Number 12 is for special events, so are staff taking applications for special events, and they're proposing a fee structure just to cover some of the administrative costs of $100 an application for small events, $250 per application for a medium event, and $500 per application for a large-sized event. We're estimating the additional revenue cost to be $10,000.
Okay. Mayor Diodati.
But just to be clear, if you're a non-for-profit, council can waive the fees, you've got a fund for that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel had a fund for that.
What did I say?
He said you have a fund.
Okay. You're right, man.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mayor Diodati, seconded by Councillor Thompson, to approve staff's recommendation. Call the vote, all those in favor, and that's unanimous as well. Number 13.
Number 13 lends itself to Councillor LaCoco's discussion, so this is for fire remote alarms. Charges for preventable false alarms have been in the schedule of fees for many, many years, but the previous direction from council was not to charge them. We are able to charge up to the MTO rate, if I'm not mistaken, per vehicle that attends the property. We are not suggesting that. Staff was suggesting, or sorry, yeah, staff was suggesting the fees be, the first two alarms would be free, no charge, third alarm would be $300, the fourth alarm $400, and the fifth alarm $800.
Councillor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how I missed it on number 15, but I had that discussion with the chief.
Mine was actually different, so don't worry about it.
I think it got, it got updated when it went to the 700,000, and I didn't see that. Yes, so since 2000, we've had that bylaw, and we've had the fees, but we haven't been charging it, and in a very difficult year. When I was speaking to the chief, too, he did say that there's maintenance that you can do in a building, so you don't get false alarms, and as long as you're maintaining it, and that sort of thing, you don't get the false alarm. So it would be nice if everybody maintains them, that they're not using our fire services. So I'll put that motion forward.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councillor LaCoco, seconded by Councillor Patel. Any questions or comments? Mayor Diodati.
So first question I have is, as having been a small business owner, and I did have So first question I have is, as having been a small business owner, and I did have issues in the past with false alarms, does this get reset? Or is this fourth one ever, does it get reset every few years, like your insurance, you know, with your tickets and whatnot? I'm just wondering, like, this isn't forever, is it? I'm just wondering if we can get some context around that.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the, your worship, yes, it resets itself every calendar year. And since its inception of the bylaw in 2000, where this came to light was recently, before the Christmas holidays, when we looked at our user fees. They've always been in there. I did take a poll of other municipalities in the region, and of course, since 2010, when we were asked not to charge, the fees have gone up significantly to the MTO rates as everything else has. But we're just proposing that we keep it for now as the bylaw reads.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Mayor, you okay with that? Okay, Counsel Campbell.
Yes, sure, or Chair. This is not including outdoor fires. No, it's in buildings, right? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Strange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if we do this, and I know, you know, a lot of the hotels, you know, you get people coming up, coming back from the bars and they're pulling it, and the hotels are getting charged. Maybe we can send the hotels and whatever else messages to maybe, because they can put a cover over part of these, because we don't, obviously, hotels pay a lot in taxes and stuff like that. So for some guy who's drunk at 2:00 in the morning coming back, I'm going to pull this, now hotels getting charged, it just doesn't seem fair. So maybe we could just leave a message or whatever with the hotel association saying, this is coming, and give them an opportunity to fix their alarms or whatever they can do, so that kind of doesn't, that mistake doesn't happen.
Chief?
If I may, through you. The actual bylaw, where it reads that the first offense, that's where the communication with staff with a hotelier, whether it's preventable or not, what we would say, and I'll just use contractors as an example, when they're renovating in a hotel. We would go there and say, can you install these things so you, so you would not have another reoccurring alarm? Or if you are going to be doing renovations, just call your monitoring company and say, listen, for the next day or two, we're going to be renovating, and so that way, it doesn't actually trigger. So those two free remote alarms, if you will, or false alarms, that's where that communication will come. It isn't until the third time that we would actually be sending them an invoice. So that is happening.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I've heard with some hotels, if it's their guests pulling the alarm, their security, they can follow up, they know what room they're in. If it's obviously a conference that people aren't there, then that's difficult, but the hotels could follow up with their guests to recoup that money.
Good point. Mayor Diodati?
Well, another scenario, and I just want to put it past the chief. So a number of years ago, when my kids were playing basketball at Stanford, my son was young, he was like, whatever, seven, and he went up, and it happened in slow motion. It was hard to believe how it happened, as he went up and he put his hand on the fire alarm, and we couldn't get there fast enough, and he pulled it. And then I had to wait out in the parking lot, as much as I wanted to drive away, I had to wait for you guys to arrive, and it was very embarrassing, and say hello to everybody as you went in and made sure there was nothing going on. But in this case, my, we did it at a school. Who would, who would get the tag, would get tagged here? Would it be the school board? Would it be my son? You know, like, I'm not, I'm just wondering how it would work for the, you know, viewing public at home that are curious to know how that would, how that would happen.
Again, through you. Again, that would be very difficult for school to prevent every type of situation with a fire alarm. So as the chief, I would take that into consideration, and I'm sure we could work something out. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Counsel LaCoco, seconded by Counsel Patel, to approve staff's recommendation in principle. I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Number 14. Who's the recommendation?
Second.
Motion by Counsel Campbell, seconded by the mayor. Any questions? All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so I believe that that is the end of attachment 15, so Ms. Clark, did you want to go to the ABCs?
Through the Chair, yes. So we have this motion from January 17th that counsel deferred.
Does everyone have this page in front of them? The one with the highlights on it? Yeah, okay, that's the one that we're.
And it's also an attachment on the January 17th agenda from F202302. I realize that's tiny and hard to see. I've taken the liberty of highlighting in yellow the outstanding ones. Counsel did approve some of the grants decisions on January 17th, but you've yet to approve the boards and commissions, the fee for service, and the water patrol under the grants. So I took the liberty of drafting a few motions regarding them, if we want to use that as a starting point. So I broke it into groups. The first one would be approving the funding levels for boards and commissions. And this may be an appropriate time for Counsel Patel's previous thought.
Okay, so now, does everyone have this one as well? In front of them? No? Okay, okay. Ah, thank you, okay. So there's four recommendations in this one here. They deal with the Niagara Falls, they're on the screen there. They deal with the Niagara Falls Illumination Board, Niagara District Airport Commission for operating and for capital, and then the Niagara Falls Public Library. We do have those on the highlighted attachment. They are the first four yellow lines. So I'll open up discussion for that. Anyone can put a motion on the floor as they see fit. Counsel Patel.
I want to put a motion on the floor to reduce the library funding to 20, to $25,000, so it brings it to even 8% overall budget increase.
Okay. Is that what the, because I only have the number and the recommendation? Yeah?
Through the Chair, if we want to maybe see if there's a seconded and how this motion plays out, I can simply reduce the number on the screen by 25,000 if it passes, or if it's defeated, we can just leave the number on the screen as it is. So the library's current ask is what you see on the screen. If counsel approves a $25,000 reduction, I will reduce that number to 5,343,608. Oh, I didn't check that part.
Okay, seconded? Yeah, okay. So the motion is on the floor that the library received 5,343,608, slightly less than what is on the board there.
Sorry.
Oh, it's almost on the board now? No?
Yeah, that was, sorry.
That was the original one?
Yeah.
5368, and that will go to 5343. Any questions to the motion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And there's two opposed, the motion's carried in principle. The other three recommendations that are up there deal with the Niagara Falls Illumination Board, and two for the district airport, both in operating and in capital. Would anyone like to approve those in principle? Motion by Mayor Diodati, seconded by Counsel Patel. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Thank you, that's carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr.
Moving on. Sorry, go ahead, Tev.
I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could move on to the fee for service groups next, that's the next set of yellow highlighted items.
Okay, so just to go through these, because the dollar amounts are up there. So Animal Control Services are, would be receiving their full ask. Boys and Girls Club would be receiving their full ask. The Downtown BIA to run the Santa Claus Parade and the Sparkle Awards would be receiving the full ask. Fireman's Park would be going up by 1,950. The Niagara Falls Art Gallery would be receiving their full ask. Niagara Falls Concert Band would be receiving their full ask. The Innovation Hub would be receiving their full ask. It's prorated, I understand. Yeah. And the St. John's Chair van will be taken away from us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Knowing that those are the amounts, oh, sorry, Counsel LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one question. On the Niagara Falls Ryerson Innovation Hub, it is for a partial year to March 31st for the agreement. What is happening after that? What are the future plans?
Sure.
I'll start, and I believe Serge is, Mr. Felicetti's on the line. So this, this amount to March 31st concludes the contract that we had with the federal government for that program and with now, the now Toronto Metropolitan University formerly known as Ryerson for the creation of that hub. Subsequent to that, the hub will be coming to counsel to make a presentation, to describe, to wrap up their, you know, their, a year, provide their report, and also provide their plans going forward. They're going to continue on with, with a funding source outside of city funds. There will be a report going to counsel from Holco on that, and they will have a reduced budget, but no impact on the levy at that point in time. So hopefully that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Looking for a motion then to simply approve the funding levels that staff have up there? I have a motion by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Campbell. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. And the last one that we have on the ABC chart is the St. John Ambulance, and I do believe that they as well will be, will be granted their full ask. So I have a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Patel, to approve, to approve. Yeah. If there aren't any questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously as well. Okay, so now we're through attachment 15, and also the ABCs. Is it staff's desire to go into the recommendations of the actual operating budget? Or were staff going to take back some of the revisions and come back next week?
Through the Chair, if you can give me a couple of minutes, I can add up all the recommendations that were just approved in principle, and we can kind of say where we're at.
Okay.
I don't know if there are any more questions for anyone else.
Well, I'll tell you what, you can go ahead and, and type the numbers, and any questions, we'll just redirect them to someone else. I have Counsel LaCoco and Counsel Strange that have questions.
Okay, thank you. I do have some more questions and then some comments in general. One of the questions is regarding the exchange. It said for 2022, the cost was $900,000 to operate it, and it was closed. And then for 2023, the cost is 990,000, and it's open. I read the note under number 72 in there. It just seems odd that it's only $90,000 to operate it for possibly nine months or eight months. There's only $90,000 difference.
Thank you, through the Chair. What we do is we now budget for the full cost of that operation. We thought, last year, we thought the, the exchange would have been open by now, but because of construction delays, we budget for the full amount when, for the full year, so that you don't have situations where you open up something half a year, council's made the decision to do it, you only take half the budget hit, and then you automatically have another budget hit the following year, but you've not increased your service level. So we changed that practice last year, and we deferred some of those things. So the, you know, we are budgeting, inside the budget contains the full amount of the expense to operate that for, for one year. Last year, we had estimated full year cost to be 900,000. We, you know, for utility increases and some of that other stuff and wage increases, we've upped it to 990 for a full year operation. So at the end of next year, you'll see a positive variance in the operations when you look budget to actual. But the taxpayer has been levied that amount to operate the, for fully, and hopefully we have, wherever we have positive variances, we generally have one or two negative variances, and they tend to offset at that point in time.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I guess that's where the difficulty is. We look at the budget from last year, it's not actuals, so that's where the difficulty is. And I know we've talked about actuals before, and I'm hoping with this new software that's coming in and all of the new people working the software, that we'll be able to look at actuals and not budgets. Thank you.
You agree.
Yes. Question on legal services. It has 500,000 contracted for legal services, and in our budget meeting earlier, I did ask why, because we have a new solicitor, and I was told for potential Ontario Land Tribunal cases because of Bill 23. So I guess my question is, would it not be more effective to hire a city solicitor for that year and see how it goes, or on contract or whatever, compared to the 500,000? That seems very high.
Thank you, through the Chair, and Niti, thanks for her to come out. Overall, our external legal fees have been coming down because we've hired internal counsel. But, you know, with OLT planning matters, there is some, you know, there is some specialization, and we don't always know when which ones are going to come, and there could be caseload issues. So, you know, could we see sometime in the future adding another lawyer with specialty in planning matters? You know, that is a possibility, but we just essentially brought on a full-time solicitor at this point in time, so it would be something that we consider in our long-term plans, but I'll let Niti provide further, further information.
Thank you. Through the Chair, that's correct. Since I started at the city, which was just about a year ago, our internal legal department has started assuming a lot of different matters in a lot of different areas of law. So it is not just planning and real estate and development, it is procurement, construction, enforcement, corporate. We now also assume legal advice for the corporations controlled by the municipality. And the office I walked into did not have a full-time internal city solicitor for a number of years. It was only managed by external counsel working part-time. So the actual expenses were significantly greater, and the actual expenses on external counsel were always much greater than what was estimated at budget time. And this is exactly what we want to avoid, just taking into account the reality of the types of requests we get from staff in a variety of areas of law, in managing the best balance between internal resources and expertise that is available to us from the outside in different areas of law. And it is, it is still, the numbers that are presented are still a savings compared to what the city legal budget versus actuals were looking like in the years before a full-time city solicitor internally.
Thank you. Staff encouraged us to watch last year's budget discussion, and it was quite interesting watching two and a half hours of our council meeting, and we went through all of that, and I really paid attention to what the CAO said about that 6.5, because I'm really stuck on the 6.5 and how we're going to move forward and why we did it and what were the effects. And there were a lot of comments within there about the reserve, filling in the gap and not continually using reserves, doing it next year and the following year. Sometime in 2023, we're going to do it different. In 2023, we have, we'll have a long-term plan, plan in front of council 2023. I don't remember a plan coming to council for us to have these discussions other than what we're discussing now, and I think that that would have been very helpful for me to understand the big picture instead of discussing it now. So I think we need to do that now. I know we're coming back next week, but I think we need to, I can't speak for everybody, but I would think that most people don't know municipal accounting. Some people may. This is very complicated when you're talking about tax levy and reserves and what you can use them for and what you can't, and what do you do if you borrow them, and there's policies. There's a lot of stuff, and my brain has just exploded in the last two, two weeks going over this. So I think it is really important that we know what that was. And I did speak with Ms. Clark very, so many times on the phone and by email and asking questions, and she's been great. So I would like her to explain about the 6.5 million, how we used it last time, try to break it down to what a business person or a person running their home understands, because some people think it's one way and some people think it's another way, and I'd like you to explain it to Ms. Clark if you could, and then I'll go on with my other questions.
Through the Chair, I'll do my best. So last year, we added 6.5 million in additional funding to offset the amount of expenditures we wanted to get approved. This is not sustainable. This was suggested to come from our reserve funds. It's more likely than not, we will not actually use 6.5 million of reserve funds, because a large amount of that was for staffing, and staff aren't hired right on January 1st. So there's, there's going to be some savings. We won't use the full 6. We won't use the full six and a half million. But in any event, if you were to leave the six and a half million in the 2023 budget, you would be committing an additional six and a half million from reserves. So now you're committing 13 million from reserves over the two years. And quite frankly, that's, that's just a lot of draw in our reserves. We don't have that much available to just throw into a capital, uh, operating budget again. I was speaking with Councillor LaCoco and to try to put this into perspective for say, say an individual income. So if I live at home and I, my expenses are $1,000, but I only make $800, I need to either reduce my expenses by $200 or dip into my savings account for $200. If next year, I still only make $800 and I still have a thousand, I need to dip into my savings account for another $200. So now I'm down $400. So at some point, you're either consistently dipping into your savings account for that same amount of money you've built in or you need to reduce your expenses or increase your, your earning potential, your revenue, your tax gross. Does, does that help?
Thank you, Ms. Clark. I hope it helps. It, it does get very confusing. I did ask the, the CAO at the last budget meeting and I knew, knew we didn't have a crystal ball and I asked, what, what is it going to look like in 2023? Could it be 10%? And our poor CAO said, no, we didn't have a, a crystal ball, but he said, you know, I don't want to come back in 2023 with 10%. Yes, it could be 10%, but that's not going to happen, that we had some, some things to do. And I know you explained earlier, you know, we weren't expecting the, the war in the Ukraine and the economy. I, I do get that. I know, I know that. So you did explain those major factors, so that, that's been helpful.
I have a 10 for the record. We're going to be.
Yes, because we are moving around, but it did start at 10. You also stated that we could revisit capital and I've always struggled with approving the capital budget first, not knowing what the implications would be in our operating if we could have cut things in the capital budget. So you did say that we could revisit capital. Do we have an opportunity right now? And I know Municipal Works has already gone off and, and planned a lot of the things that we've already approved, but if we're so stuck right now in our operating, do we have an opportunity to go back into our capital and maybe stop projects, defer projects or, or whatever?
There's a very, you can't, there's a very limited levy draw to the capital budget. So usually, it's usually around the debt servicing cost for, for a capital project or to transfer to the capital reserve. And the challenge with that is, again, it's a bit of a deferral because most of our capital budget, we had very few service enhancement capital budgets, they're mostly repair to maintain, good state of repair. I think that's the engineering phrase, good state of repair. So there is always an opportunity. What we do is we don't advance all our capital budget, we do the ones that are mostly good state of repair. So there is always an opportunity, but the savings is not very much on the levy. You know, quite frankly, it's because most of the capital budget is funded either through DC reserves or other reserves. It's very, there's a little bit funded through levy, but it's pretty minor. I'm not even sure if we have what the levy draw was for the capital budget.
The levy draw for the capital budget would have been the three and a half million dollar transfer to capital and the 1%, which is about 787,000.
Okay, thank you. I guess for our meeting next, next week, I don't know if there's any projects or suggestions that you could come back with on capital. I know it's small, but you know, we're looking at a list of things that say 3,000, 10,000, it's worth looking at. Is that possible?
I think the recommendation that we would suggest from staff point of view is you look at your fleet reserve, which is a capital item, which has, not with the budget, the asset management, 1%, which again, just feeds into it. And from a capital point of view, those would be the two that we would say you go to first for that.
Okay, thank you. You also mentioned that it's hard for you to do a budget without doing a four to five year budget. You've always worked on that. I was wondering, as part of our bigger plan, not the strategic plan, but the strategic plan ties it into it, but could we look at a four to five year budget that we're looking at, you know, 2024? I know Ms. Clark has already mentioned a few things that you're looking at. We need to see the big picture. It's really hard to work in a silo in one year.
I couldn't agree more. Tiffany probably, you know, probably has some battle scars from, you know, from my discussion on this. You know, we did two things last year. We, I don't know how to say this, we're a hundred million dollar organization. We, we need, we need a lot of catch-up. We're still not completed our audit of financial statements and we're, we're completing those for the last couple of years. We need to get that caught up and we need the tools in place, the forecast. We did hire just recently, Mr. Ee. One of his many tasks on there is to undertake some forecasting for what our reserve levels should be, what our capital levels should be. It's not just a finance item though, I just want to be clear. We all need our, you know, 10-year plans and five-year plans and it's just something that, you know, frankly, the city has never really done. And I would say that last year, I was fairly new and maybe I was a little bit too aggressive. Tiffany's, that, you know, I wanted to move it quicker, but when you got into it, there were so many pieces that just weren't there. There wasn't a good foundation, so we're still working on building that foundation to get to a forecast. I don't want to make up a lot of excuses, we need to do a better job on our forecasting and we need to do a better job to get caught up. So we, you know, council's been good to give us some of those tools. Unfortunately, some of those tools came very late. The one key person came just, just December, to be quite frank. So, and, and we still don't have our software. We're, we're going to RFP out for the software to get that and that's a couple of years away, but we need to do a bit better job getting caught up because I don't like this, I don't think staff likes this and I, I'm not envious of the position council is in, that you don't have a long-term forecast to say, you know, we're, we're very comfortable going forward with that. So we'll do a better job. We'll caution out some of our estimates on our reserves, you know, for the next budget. You know, I'd like to have a bit better forecasting for our next budget.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I wanted to talk about was our hospital fund. So as of 2021, I, I talked with Ms. Clark and she sent it out, our hospital reserve is at 23.2 million. Our, our records aren't up to date because we just passed our 2022, but currently it might be over 24 million. So we've been adding 2% of our, 2% of the reserve, the OLG fund of 280,000 is in our budget right now. So the, the province is responsible for healthcare and if the municipalities pay for the hospitals, why is the province going to step up if we keep putting money in for our hospital? We've already pledged 22 million, we've paid $11 million for the land, we've orchestrated the donation of the land, we have 27 to 30 million dollars of infrastructure coming up, we've approved a 2,000, 200,000 for an MRI. The provincial government wants privatized healthcare and I don't mean to politicize this, but it is being politicized because the municipalities are being asked to throw in money to fix our healthcare system. And there, there's some figures out there, I've been doing some reading, it's been saying, I don't mind privatized healthcare, but it's been saying that the privatized healthcare will get 33% more paid for a service than it would in an existing facility that we have. So I, I don't understand why that 33% is not going into the, the issues that we have now with the, the publicly funded hospitals and, and units. So there's that. The healthcare is a provincial responsibility and if you look at the survey that we, that we, we put out to our residents and only 435 people responded, it's not a very good, good response level, but these were the top things. Roads, streets is one, water, sewer, storm, number two, three, energy, four bridges, five climate change, six parks and trails, seven fire station, eight athletic fields and nine arenas. Healthcare wasn't in there. We didn't even ask our residents, where does healthcare fit in your priorities because it's not one of our priorities. So my suggestion is that we can, if, if this council can decide on what our pledge is, we've pledged 22, they want another 10, we don't have to give them the other 10. If we don't have to give them the other 10, we can remove the 280,000 that's sitting in the budget right now and move that over to the capital reserve and use that 280,000 for things for our residents in, in the capital. And if we agree to that, then we don't have to do 280,000 next year, we don't have to do 280,000 the year after that. Welland has been very local that they do not like the location and it's been stated out there publicly that they probably will not fund it. So what will happen? Will the, will the hospital fund come back to us and say we need to put more money in? We really need, at, at this time in our budget, we really need to say, it's tight, we understand, we'd love to give, give to the hospital. Hospital is important. Every single person here uses the services, our parents use it, our, our children use it. It is important, but it is not a local responsibility. And we're already pledged 22 million and now they want more. And we're, we're cutting 3,000, 10,000. I think we need to start looking somewhere else because if we, if we keep paying for this hospital, the provincial government is not going to. Bill 23 I wanted to talk about. Premier Ford has stated that he's going to make the municipalities whole. So people are thinking, okay, well, whatever changes come, the money will come back somehow. We don't know that. He hasn't stated how that's going to happen. Then most recently about development charges, Premier Ford said that municipalities are going to have to cut waste and make up the shortfall. So on one hand, he's saying he's going to cover the shortfall and another one, he's saying the municipalities have to cut out the waste. The provincial government has dropped the ball on housing and healthcare and they expect our local taxpayers to fix it. I had a lot of conversations with our, our planner, Ms. Dolch, and we're all trying to figure this out, but we just don't know where we're going to be with development charges. What is going to be paid? What is going to be exempt? What definitions are attainable? Attainable housing is what? We have a definition in our housing strategy plan of attainable housing for Niagara Falls figures. If the province puts one out for attainable housing for the whole province, the average house cost for the whole province is very different than what is Niagara Falls, which is different than Windsor, which is different than Toronto. We don't know how this is going to affect us and it's, will start affecting us in 2023. I don't know if it's going to be a million dollars, if it's going to be 20 million dollars, we just don't know. Ms. Dolch was very, very detailed in explaining about how some of it can come out per situation, but the end result we don't know about. So it's very difficult going through this budget and trying to represent our residents when we're cutting all of these things and now when we give to one, one organization or for one thing, we're saying, oh, it's not, it's not our responsibility. We're giving to a hospital. Yes, we need a hospital, but is it local responsibility? I'm not saying don't honor the pledge. What I'm saying is maybe we should decide on what the amount is and then stop that and then move forward and put that money to other use. And then lastly, I know we were talking about some of the things that we could, could remove out of the budget. I find it very hard to save money when you're overextended and I think we're overextended. So some of the things that we can save have been suggested about moving the debt holders. I love the idea, accounting-wise, it's a great idea, but we're in a very challenging year, so we need to look at removing those debt holders. The fleet replacement like Mr. CAO just brought up, sure, they're best practices, but it's very difficult right now. Doctor recruitment, I know we have the 300,000 in there, we didn't use it all from last. Maybe that's something we can cut a little bit. The election costs, I know you don't want to come up with election costs four years from now, but again, it's hard to save if we're bleeding right now. We, we're overextended right now, we really need to do that. I talked about the OLG, 280,000. This has been brought up by a number of councillors, specifically Councillor Thompson about the policing. I know the CAO has been able to adjust that rate from 4.1 million down to 18% of our OLG money that comes in. So if we are looking at 14 million, 18% of that is 2, 2.5 million. Is there a way for further negotiations or getting some sort of statistics? I know like with our fire department, we get statistics about calls and all of that. Can we get calls and statistics? What is the policing unit for the casino? What, what are they servicing? How many calls are there? That, that's a lot of money that we are paying for that. Yes, we have great OLG money coming in, but we're also paying money for maybe something and I don't know and that's why I would like to, to see the, see the figures. The trust fund for the cemeteries, again, we're trying to, to save when we need things. I understand about the trust, trust fund for the cemetery, I get that, but maybe that's something. And then I was also wondering if our staff or councillors can come up with ideas for revenue for next year. Not that it's going to touch this budget or affect this, but sometimes you need a, a while to work on some ideas to come forward for next year. We talked about cutting services. Oh, here's something regarding the labor. We're looking, Mr. CAO, you said something about that the inflation over two years was 15%. If you look at labor, it hasn't gone up 15%. So to put a 15% inflation on a whole budget when our labor costs are the highest out of our operating budget, it's not really accurate. Am I correct on that?
The, yeah, the CPI indexes for a bundle of goods and services, though, like if I go look at what my legal fees caught or what I'm getting charged per hour for consulting fees, for outside planning fees and that kind of stuff, they have gone up, you know, significantly.
So that makes it up?
Yeah, so, you know, I don't expect, you know, our salaries have not gone up 15%, but I'm just trying to give an overall bundle of, of how, you know, the total budget has gone up. And if you look at over the period of time between 2016 and today, you know, minimum wage has gone up 37% and there is a upward, you know, pressure when minimum wage goes up that all our wage levels go up. So when you look over the long period of time, wages have gone up, you know, significantly.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if we can survey the residents about the hospital? We surveyed about where people wanted to spend the money. I, I would really like to see a survey about where people think our local dollars should go. Are, are we saying, yes, it's a service, but who wants to pay for it? And sort of outline, I was wondering if that was something that we can do and since this is coming back next week anyway, I don't know if it could be sent back to staff for further suggestions about cutting. So those are my comments.
Okay, thanks. I think I had, oh, yeah, I had Councillor Strange that had his hand up. Do you still wish to speak?
No.
Nope, okay. Mayor Doherty.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I have a few comments. First off, I know Councillor LaCoco made mention of revisiting the capital budget. That would be a motion for reconsideration. We need two-thirds majority to reconsider anything in that budget. So it's just not a matter of simply bringing it forward with a simple majority. It would mean two-thirds and I don't think that's really fair to staff. We've already voted on it and passed it and they've made decisions based on it. I don't think that's fair to staff to have to go back now when they're already planning and budgeting. We talked about long-term planning, that undermines the planning of the short-term planning. So I, I, I would just caution that. And speaking, we, Councillor LaCoco was speaking about reserves and, and I do believe we need to replenish our reserves. You know, it's been said that using up your reserves is like burning the furniture to heat the house. It's not sustainable, so you can't keep doing it. And everyone that has kids has a reserve, one of the reserves I'll refer to is RESP. I was speaking with someone the other day about that, we have an education savings plan for our kids. Yes, we have a savings and yes, we put so much every month, every year, yes, we get some top-up from the federal government and that money is ours and we can tap into it, but then eventually when junior wants to go to school, there's going to be no fun. You say, well, I bought a car. You know, sorry, but your luck. So I mean, you know, we've got to maintain and replenish and I know that's part of the plan today, the reserves. The one other thing I do want to touch on before.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, to that point, I just want to bring up about the capital before you go on to something else. The only reason why I brought it up is that our CAO in last year's budget presentation said that we could revisit capital. So it wasn't my idea.
Yeah, no, fair enough, fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Bad CAO, bad CAO. So where was I? Oh, yeah. Healthcare, I do want to touch on this and I appreciate Councillor LaCoco's discussion points. And yes, healthcare is a provincial matter, 100%, but not when you're building a hospital and not when you have a hospital. Everything inside the hospital is done by your local foundation and I know if Councillor Newsteag was here, she'd have a lot more than I can say about this, but I'm involved as capital campaign co-chair for the new hospital. We're raising a lot of money, several millions of dollars so that we can fill this hospital. The way it works typically is the province will build and maintain, run operations and that's the big expense. It's not the equipment and it's not building it, it's maintaining it and running it for 50 years. Operations are by far the bigger expenses. All we have to do is we have to fill it with equipment, tables, chairs and everything that goes inside of the hospital. And, and it comes down to this. So I was here when all this was happening and I know not everybody was. And, and it comes down to this. So I was here when all this was happening, and I know not everybody was, but it comes down to, do you want a hospital or not? Because that's it. Because I can tell you, I'm not going to say with cities, but other cities around the province, we're all competing for a hospital. And I didn't want to end up like Lincoln, where it's been 25 years, no hospital. I didn't want to be in that situation. So we went out collectively with staff. We got land donated, 30 acres. And we found out after the fact, you need 50 now because they want to rebuild on the same site. So then we purchased for 11 million, the other 20 for a parcel of 50 acres, which should cover us for the next 100 years theoretically. So that was number one. Number two, we lobbied the government. We, we got local businesses to, to put up that big billboard, and we did get the, the government to agree to this. The idea of backfilling by the community raising the money for everything inside the hospital is not new. This is not a current government. This has been the way it's been all along. That's how it is if you want a hospital. And if you don't want a hospital, that's no problem to build it elsewhere. We made a commitment. We want a hospital. And that's why I made the commitment, along with Harry Oaks, that we're going to go raise the money, and we're raising the money, and we're having a lot of success. I wouldn't want to send a message out there to the donors that we're not so sure about what we're doing. We're 100% committed. And if you look at any surveys, number one, and it's been in the papers last couple of weeks, but a lot of great surveys, healthcare is number one. Number one. And locally, it's roads and sewers, infrastructure. So those are the two, one and two things on everyone's priority list in this country. So to, to think it isn't, it 100% is, and we can do surveys, even though ours are not scientific and they're small sample size, but the fact remains, that is a priority. So I just want to be real clear, because we're working really, really hard, and, and we're trying to raise this money, and it's not easy. I'm having to go to these people and, and get donations. And I wouldn't want anyone to think this council isn't completely committed to this hospital. I think that's the wrong message. We've got an older, one of the oldest populations in Ontario, right here in Niagara. And, and, and speaking of the distance from Welland, that's another part. I was part of the committee with Kevin Smith, with EMS. We surveyed, and we did all strategic uh metrics and data points to figure out what the best point in the region was. And that's how they picked the current location. It wasn't political. It was done by the experts. And then we came in and got the land donated. And it, and I can't remember the time off the top of my head now, but it, it is not far. It's farther from the, the farthest point of Fort Erie than Welland. Welland's not that far. And they're going to be, and that's without the road improvements that are going to be made and the region is making. So matter of fact, 27 million dollars is being spent down there between the region and the city to upgrade the intersection. So I just want to be really clear that I know we're saying it, it's not political, but it feels political. I mean, the fact is, we want a hospital. And if we don't, that's a different decision. But I think we already made the commitment. So I just want to touch on that. I'm passionate about it, because I've been working at this for 10 years. I wouldn't want anyone to think otherwise. So, uh, and, and I'd like to, at this point, Mr. Chair, uh, I've made my comments, uh, on some of the comments, because I do think it's a fine line between hands-on and micromanaging. We need to make sure, let the experts do the expertise. And we are here as a governance board, and in business, they say, uh, you know, nose in, fingers out. Right? So we got to make sure we give direction, but we're not micromanaging, because that's not our role. So uh, in regard to, and I know councillor Loco made mention of debt placeholders, so I'd like to make a couple of motions. And although I know that we need to have these, uh, and eventually, you know, we've got to replace our fleet. I understand that. It has to be accounted for. I just don't think we need to do it, uh, Mr. Chair, all at one time. So I'm going to make two motions. One, I'll move that 50%, 50% of the recommended debt placeholder amount be included in the budget, not 100. That'll be a reduction of over, I don't know, I'm sure Tiffany will do the math on that, but over 300,000. Because we need to get this budget down. I don't think we can put this heavy load on everybody all at one time. And secondly, I'd further move the 50% of the recommended increase in fleet charges be included in this budget. So we cut that down to half, and that'll reduce the, the budget by more than 700,000. Those two will be over a million dollar reduction in stress on this year's budget and on the taxpayers, so we can cut the cloth to fit the suit. And I just think that, uh, that's a reasonable approach to deal with this. Through you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I think that Ms. Clark just actually typed them up on the screen for everyone. So uh, I'll take the motion simultaneous unless anyone wants it split. The motion on the floor is to reduce the debt placement holders, or the placeholder, sorry, by 50%. And also to reduce the uh fleet replacement reserve by 50%. If everyone understands the motion-
Wait a second.
Sorry? Oh, sorry, a second-
We have a second.
Yeah, a second there by councillor Strange. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, all in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you, Mayor Diodati. Uh, councillor Patel?
While we're making motion, I would like to move a motion that we reduce the recommended levy, provincial required infrastructure levy from 1% to half percent. Because due to cuts we are making, I think we should take a smaller steps towards our priorities and just make it like half a percent, not 1%. Because I think that's mandatory that we have to do fully asset management plan and the provincial guidelines.
Yep.
But is it possible for moving it from 1% to half percent? And if we can, I would like to make a motion.
Absolutely. So um, as part of the province's asset management plan that they are requiring municipalities to do, we have to file our plan uh by a certain date. Last year, council decided to introduce a 1% tax levy that went straight to infrastructure. The recommendation on the floor is to uh put another 1%. And your motion would be to cut that in half-
Yep.
So that it's only a half a percent for this year. Okay. So do I have a second there to that motion? Councillor Strange? Any questions or comments?
Can we get some comments from staff on that, please?
Oh, sure.
Uh, it's, it's possible. Um, and uh, as I said, with each of those uh motions, um, you know, we'll have to make that up by 2025. We'll have to, uh, by 2025, we have to present a, the province with a finance plan of how to handle our asset management. Uh, and uh, you know, we are, we will get the core, the, sorry, the non-core report in Q3 of this year.
A little later, Q4.
Q4 of this year. So that way we will, council will have a better understanding what is, how big that elephant is to, to swallow. We know for uh roads and bridges and underground, it's, we need about 7.8 million dollars to be spent more per year. We really, you know, we threw out the number of 11 million. That was the last study, but that wasn't a very good study. The, the new study will provide much more detailed information for council. And then we'll have, uh, then we'll have three years to figure out a plan. It doesn't mean that we have to have it fully paid for by 2025. We just, the province requires a rational plan to, to address the issue. Uh, so, you know, would staff like 1%? Yes. Uh, but as long as you're moving forward, staff understa-, you know, you know, understands that, and as long as council understands that at some point in time, we're going to have to potentially make bigger, bigger investments in, in the capital.
What would be the difference? Is it possible to move?
Yep.
Through the chair, that would um bring the capital levy down to 393,627 dollars. I've also gone ahead and updated the rest of the numbers and the recommendations. I left the original numbers for transparency with a strike through. Um, if we look back at the chart I started preparing, so um, kudos to council. You have approved um about 705,000 in either budget reduction, like expense reduction or increased revenue. That's wonderful. With the additional um deferral of, of the uh fleet replacement and the debt replacement holder, that brought the levy down- That brought the levy down to 7.7%. And then uh with councillor Patel's recent motion passing, there would be in a 0.5% capital levy. So that's where we're sitting at the moment.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Clark. So, oh, sorry, councillor Loco.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I thought when we were um bringing up the one, the 1, 1.0 uh fleet replacement, sorry, not fleet replacement, um, asset management. I remember the mayor standing here, and we were talking about the 1.0, and I thought it was said that once we, once we put one point, whatever we decide on at that point is going forward. It's going to be the same, that we couldn't change it. So does councillor Patel's motion affect that?
No, so the, the, yeah, the 1% from last year stays, sorry. Yeah, the 1% from last year stays, and we account for that. So, you know, we'll make 780,000 dollars worth of revenue would come in. If this one would come in, then we'd be at about a million, a little over a million dollars worth of uh capital levy that we'd be putting into the capital reserve for our asset management challenges. So the 1% doesn't, last year's 1% stays.
Okay. So when I asked you earlier, it was 10% plus 1% plus 1%, you said, no, it was just 10% plus 1%. So now it's 10% plus half a percent, but with all of the changes. Got it? Thank you.
It's 7.7 at the moment with all the, everything approved in principle.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to take down the uh capital levy from a 1% additional this year to a half a percent. Everyone understands the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose? Councillor Campbell?
Yes, uh, thank you. Through this whole discussion this evening, uh, I haven't heard anything about what we're doing with the uh casino money.
Through the chair, we've budgeted for 14 million in casino funds. It's a slight increase from the 13.8 million. However, um, the amount that actually stays in the levy budget is 5,90,000. That's this current subsidy. Um, previously, a couple of years ago, council approved that we reduce the subsidy, which used to be 5.895 million, by 50% of the growth. So staff have gone ahead and done that. So the remaining subsidy is the 5 million. Then 18% of the casino money goes to the police. As councillor Loco pointed out, that's about 2.5 million. Council has a current dedication of 2% of the funds to the hospital, about 280,000, and the remaining 6.1 million is a transfer to capital. And we let accumulate that and um let you spend it in the future budget. So it'll be allocated in the 2024 budget.
So, no?
And if we come in above the 14 million, any additional would just go to extra capital spending. Because you've already-
It's all capital.
Other than the 5,90,000 that's in the levy, it's capital, yeah. So-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So in our operating budget, we have 5 million from the casino in here. Pretty much everything else goes into the capital.
Yeah.
That 5 million is subsidizing your levy right now by 6.5%.
Councillor Strange?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I can see we're doing a pretty good job of, of shaving uh some of this levy off. Um, the one thing I'm, I'm noticing, and, and um part of the big budget is obviously, obviously fire. Um, and I, I noticed that, you know, and I agree that we should have the, the six new firefighters that, that we want to hire. Um, my problem is just, just the overtime. And it just seems like it's, it's going up, going up, and, and I don't know when it's going to stop. Um, we're going from 1.5 million to 1.7 um from 2022 to 2023. We're hiring six new firefighters, so it should alleviate, you would think, that problem of the overtime. I just, could I get some feedback from either the CAO or the chief on, on, you know, can it, can it remain at 1.5? Does it have to go to 1.7? I just don't see an end to this overtime. And, and it, you know, it's one of our biggest uh tributors to our tax levy. And um, you know, obviously, the service is, is unbelievable. We have great service and stuff like that. I just want to see if there's any guy, going to be any time that we're going to see an end to this, the overtime, which seems just astronomical.
I'll start, and the chief can uh pop in. Uh, we budgeted 1.5 million. We are over 2 million. So goes back to budget versus actual. Uh, the, the 1.7 million we had put in there, uh, assuming that there would be some additional hires, that council would make uh some additional hires. The challenge that the chief has is uh, we're a little bit better than we were last year because we have an ad out there right now. There's a recruitment process going right now for firefighters. Um, but there is a training period uh before the firefighters are allowed to essentially replace a firefighter and cut down on the overtime. Uh, we can certainly uh take a look at freezing that budget with a risk that we might have slight overtime uh increases. But your biggest savings for this, you hire, you give the, go ahead to hire six firefighters now, your biggest savings will come in the 2024 budget. Uh, you will have some savings in 2023, but your biggest savings will come hopefully in, in 2024. Uh, just because of the time it takes to get the firefighters on, on the truck. But uh, we can certainly take a look at uh changing that budget. Uh, you know, and if there's any overage, we do have a reserve that we can uh take to kind of smooth the impact to the taxpayer. But I'll let the chief fill in more details.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. The hiring process, uh, which starts with the posting that just went out early in the year. Um, and if all goes well with our typical recruit uh program, and I've asked our training division to expedite the training so we can get these, the, the firefighters uh able to work sooner than later. That is projected to start in August. So we will start to see some benefit with this program, with the, with this six additional firefighters. Uh, we won't see it until August, but we will still see some benefit to reduce our uh overtime. And what I can add, uh, just in simple uh numbers, that our 2.2 million dollars in overtime. Our WSIB um, costs were 1.7. That's 77% of our overtime were because of the WSIB. Um, uh, staff that are off on WSIB. So with this, with this additional staff of six firefighters, uh, that will lessen the amount of time that we'll have to cover those firefighters. And uh, and we do anticipate that coming significantly once they are uh available to work on the trucks and they're fully trained. And again, that won't start until uh August, uh, beginning of August, August 1st.
So if we, if we do hire, proposal is to hire these six new firefighters, can we stay at the same overtime um as last year with the 1.5? Do we need to add that 200,000 in overtime?
If you approve it, uh, again, no guarantees. I don't know if a firefighter could uh become pregnant and go off of that leave, and there's all kinds of, uh, there's all kinds of other issues that could happen. Uh, but we did put in a conservative budget uh there. We are coming, like, the actual cost was 2 million dollars. So um, I think with the six firefighters, if the chief can get expedited, um, I think it's a good uh challenge to put forward to try to keep to the 1.5 million. We pulled some current payroll, uh, and they're running about 90,000 dollars per pay period and overtime. So if we can get the firefighters on the truck, you know, uh quickly, you know, we could maybe hit the 1.5. We do, like I said, we do have some cushion that we can pull out of a reserve uh to handle it. So if council wants to reduce the impact to the taxpayer, we can keep the budget at 1.5 with the risk that we may still have an overage.
Thank you. Okay. You know what? And, and I, and like I said, nothing, I don't, Justin's here from the union. I love the chief, and I love everything they do. And, and uh, I know part of that overtime goes towards the PTSD, and, and I said to the chief a couple of weeks ago, there was a fire at Hickson where the one woman passed away, and you don't realize the effect it has on some of these firefighters who've got to go in and watch that and, and, you know, walk away from that and how it affects, affects them for the rest of their lives. We have no, no idea. Um, you know, I have to be, uh, um, you know, I'm representing the taxpayers. I want to see our levy. We're trying to dip, and we're trying to take away from different departments. Um, so I, I, I would like to approve that we hire the six new firefighters with the following conditions, that the 2023 overtime budget stays at 1.5 million. Um, and uh, further, maybe staff can be directed that the 2024 overtime budget be, you know, just overlook it, or if we can reduce it even more, if possible, if we can have a look at it. Obviously, we don't want to hurt the performances of, of the firefighters, but in the end, we, we want to try to keep that levy as down as low as possible. So I'll make that motion.
Seconded by, okay, so I have a motion on the floor by councillor Strange that the uh, that the overtime would be budgeted at 1.5 million with the addition of the hiring of the six firefighters. And I have a second there by Mayor Diodati. Uh, councillor Loco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I completely understand the concerns about our, our fire uh budget and the overtime and, and what it's doing to our firefighters, but I don't know how we can cap it at 1.5 million. Just as the CAO said, you know, we, we don't know when there's going to be a maternity leave, a paternity leave, uh, a long-term disability, whatever the case is. I don't know how we can cap it. Can I maybe uh either talk to Ms. Clark or the chief? If we capped it, what is going to happen? All of a sudden, you come to us at three quarters of the year and say, we, we're at the 1.5. What, what do we do? Or like, how, how do you do that? I don't understand how we can cap it.
Through the chair. Um, if, if fire had an unfavorable variance in the overtime budget for 2023, we do have a fairly healthy um, we, HR stabilization reserve we could dip into. And the reason we would agree to do that in this case is as our CAO pointed out, there should be real savings in 2024, annual savings, because these firefighters would be on the trucks hopefully sometime in the summer, which means that the budget cut is a sustainable budget cut, right? And hopefully more cuts coming in 2024 to that overtime budget. So that's why- So that's why staff would be okay suggesting if we miss the mark, we could mitigate with our reserve. And to be fair, we would only, we're estimating 1.7 million. So we're potentially mitigating the $200,000.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Oh, that's right. We also have the full year salary in for the six firefighters because that's how we budget salaries. So there would be some savings there as well to offset it.
Counselor Patel.
I agree with Counselor Strange through chair to Mrs. C O and chief. We all love firefighters. We all grew up watching them as heroes in the pictures, running into building. And we, and they do, they put their life on the line for everyone. They keep us safe. But we all talk about assist management. So how, how are we not thinking about the same aspect when it comes to firefighters? Is there any way the plan can come up to that we don't have any more WSIB claims that we can actually tackle the issue, like, right before it starts? Like, especially for PTSD? If they have in-house counseling available constantly so they can start speaking about whatever issues occurring instead of waiting for them to go on WSIB claim? There is no way we cannot talk about the budgets and take care of the firefighters? I think we can juggle both at the same time.
I don't agree. I do agree with the counselor, you know, the chief, the chiefs and I have had discussions. I think that's one of the takeaways that we've asked for is that we need to take a look at all our costs in fire department. WSIB is one of those costs. We've talked to the chief about, you know, increased pre-screening. Like, we do all kinds of physical tests. Can we do mental tests to pre-screen? The chief has some enhanced programs for, for, you know, for firefighters who have those incidences. We need better return-to-work policies and better return-to-work programs so that, you know, so that they do come back. Maybe they don't come back to their same job, but they come back to doing something else that's a benefit to the taxpayer. But I think all items are on the table. And I think the chief's already looked at some enhanced programs for the, you know, for the one particular WSIB issue.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is, this is a great, this is a huge issue, not just for fire, but for all first responders. So we have already imposed three new initiatives with regards to our mental well-being over and above what we already had. So we already had a critical incident stress team internally. And just about a month ago, we did some additional training. And now we have 15 staff from various divisions inside that can get to our, any of our staff with regards to fire prevention, suppression, communications, and even ourselves in administration if, you know, if we need to go and speak to somebody. And I'm, although our mental well-being can be many different things, and PTSD is just one part of it. What we did is, I was, I'm a firm believer, although I'm not a psychiatrist, that if you don't know enough about it, then how do you know how to mitigate it or how to reach for help when you don't really know what it is? Because it's, it's, it's not all that new, but it is somewhat new. And we're getting better at it. So what I've implemented is mandatory PTSD awareness training through our HR downloads that we have in the city. And it was mandatory for every staff in the fire service, including our volunteers, that they have that minimum level of PTSD training. And that awareness is essential, not only for yourself, but maybe you see signs and symptoms in other people that you're working with. Number two, there was a federal, there's federal funding, which is a BOSS program, which is before occupational stress. It's an online training that is also available to staff. We had to sign up through, through the grant, and we were successful in getting it. And every one of our staff across all divisions have that availability to get that additional training if they so need it or wish it. Another, as I mentioned before, we have our reverend that's always available and is often called to come in as well to speak to certain staff. And he's available 24/7. And, and he's been an excellent resource for us as well. We have our own internal EAP program that is also there. And although I would like to strengthen that because I do believe that our EAP may be good for some staff, but it might not cover all the areas as first responders that we may need. So we're looking at other EAP providers, maybe more specific to what first responders do and see every day. We do have a mental awareness. I think it's higher on all of our radars with regards to, you know, what may bother me may not bother you. So as soon as we have, whether it is a medical call that's not gone well, whether it's a fire, whether it's a motor vehicle collision, whatever the case may be, the chiefs and our platoon chiefs across the department will automatically make a call to ensure, you know, do we need to do a debrief? Is it a light debrief? Is it a complete, do we need to take crews off? And it's a, it's a full evaluation depending on that incident. So I, and, and just as recent as this recruitment, although physical fitness recruitment and testing is important, we've actually introduced another layer, which is a mental test. It's done by a third party that can screen and ask questions. And hopefully, you know, or not, we'll get a report back to say that if somebody has experienced it before they've even come to the fire department or gone through a recruitment process. So that's already been implemented. So you can see that we've, we have a lot of new initiatives to try to, to, you know, not only deal with our current situation, but also to try to maybe prevent it, if it can be prevented. And again, it is so new. My philosophy to our staff has been, we have fire trucks with a lot of tools. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make a toolbox of resources that deals with mental wellness. And I don't know which tool is good for you, but you can go and pick and choose what you need to hopefully, you know, get you to where you need to be.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Patel. Counselor Strange.
Yeah, and to that point, chief, you know, you, and I don't think anyone around the council would imagine what a firefighter goes through. It's just not fighting fires. It's, it's living afterwards too, right? What you saw at that fire, what happened, happened at a car accident, you know, watching a body come out, whatever it may be. And I know a lot of first responders, we had, we had a firefighter come here, I don't know, it was about six months ago, where he had to jump into the gorge. And it was just unimaginable. You know what I mean? He almost died himself. And I believe it was either his, his wife with unborn child or had a child. And just like, imagine what it goes through. So just, you know, it's, it's something that we, I can't, I can never imagine. And it's part of your job every day. So I don't know how we solve it. I'm just glad that we, if we do need it, we have some money in reserves to help those firefighters out.
Okay, if there are any other questions or comments, the motion on the floor is to move the overtime budget to 1.5 million with the additional six, with the additional six firefighters that are being hired. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could it be stated in there that we can use other reserves? Like, I don't want somebody just looking at that, that motion and saying, oh, it's 1.5 when we haven't talked about that additional reserve. Can that be as part of the motion?
Through the chair to the, it's an automatic. We've never, in the last three years, been under the budget for overtime. We've always exceeded it. We've always paid for it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, if everyone understands the motion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Counselor Patel.
Through chair to Mr. C O. Well, we're just talking about firefighters. I think council is due for a strategic planning session. So, you know, we all have different ideas. So we can all come together and figure out which way our council's going. We can figure out our direction all together as a team.
Through, through the chair, yeah, we're going to deliver a report. We do have some challenges with what's deemed to be an open meeting and what can be done as an education session. Generally, if you're looking at a strategy session where you're, you know, putting forward ideas and not just taking information, it'd be an open session. So it'd be a council session. Our plan is to provide a staff report on the strategic plan in February with a council date scheduled for March to discuss the strategic plan. Staff are going to, staff's done a lot of homework based upon everyone's platforms and based upon a bunch of other stuff to, to give you guys a starting point. Then you can develop your strategic plan after that. We're also going to put the staff initial plan out for public comment. So when the time it comes back, then you'd be able to have some public input on what the priorities are for it. So a little bit different that was done four years ago with the other council where it was pretty much just a staff report, got accepted, moved on. We'll be a little bit more interactive. But, you know, the strategic plan, if council wants particular aspects in the planning process, feel free to feed that to staff. And then we can certainly look to integrate that in the policy. We just don't want to go offside of open meeting rules and closed meeting rules. That, so, you know, I would love to say, yeah, we can go off on a retreat as council and, and, you know, sit in a room and spitball that stuff. That we would be written up by the embedment pretty quick on something like that. So we need to, we need to make sure we do it right. But we're open to suggestions. Dale Morton is leading, will be leading that for council. And, and if you have any ideas, please email me, and I'll pass it on to Dale or email Dale directly on how you'd like to see that completed.
Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was watching last, last year's budget meeting, the C O said about the hospital that the official ask would come in sometime in 2022. So we're into 2023. I know they were here a while ago. When is that official ask and final amount going to be finalized? When is that report coming?
Thank you through the chair to the counselor. I took some comments from this counsel. I'm going to meet with representatives from the hospital. Staff have some conditions that they want to put into it and see if they'd be willing to accept certain conditions and restrictions to the funding and get a bit more detail on that. I think yourself, counselor, you want it, some guarantees that, you know, that there is no other funding requests. So we would have those discussions with the hospital on that. And then what we would do is, I don't want to use a legal term. We may have like a memorandum of understanding. We may have some other type of agreement that's there. And that would come back to council as a report. To be honest with you, I, I put it off a little bit on the back burner. We had the presentation. We have to focus on the budget if I want to get through the budget process. And then I'll go back to meeting with the, with the hospital. The hospital is also, my understanding is they have some planned meetings with Fort Erie and one other community. So, you know, I need to slip in with them. They may have to come back too for another presentation. Or, you know, when we present the report, they may also be here for a presentation at that time.
Thank you, Mr., through the chair to the C O. So if they meet with other, other municipalities and the other municipalities don't come up with their local share, will they go to another municipality such as us and ask for more?
I think we clarified that during the presentation. They gave us a range of 30 to 32 million as their request. One of the counselors asked the question specifically. If the other ones don't step up, what do you do? They said they weren't coming back to the municipality. They said it would come through their own sources, which is their parking revenue, their concession revenue, and, and/or fundraising, community fundraising revenues. So that's where they would have to source that from. And they've already made, they already have a firm commitment from the region for their contribution, so they, they won't go back there.
Okay, thank you. And one final, so our, our original pledge was 22 million, 11 million for the land, and this 10 approximately, that comes up to 53 million. I guess my question is, if we didn't come up with the 53 million, is the province not going to build the hospital?
Through the chair, the hospital will get built. The government will fund it. It's just whether you have the appropriate equipment in the hospital for that. That is really, most of this is for the fit-out of the hospital. And that's, you know, that's the intent of, you know, most of the dollars. But, you know, some of those questions, I think you could, we can get, you know, more specific clarification from NHS. I don't like speaking on behalf of another organization, but we can get more specific clarifications. I'll refer them to some of the correspondence that we've received, and I'll refer them to this meeting for them to, to respond to those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Patel.
Through chair to Mr. C O. I was waiting for end of the day for this question. In our operating fund, our labor and benefit has gone up $5.6 million. And you proposed $2.6 million for new positions. That's added to that amount? That's 5.6 plus 2.6?
Yes.
And other way, that's like what, 8.2? 8,200,000, 20, 100, I don't know, something, 8.2 million? And the way I see it, Mr. C O earlier told us that our revenue grew by 5.1% and our expenses went up by 20.5%. It's just a bad business. If you look at the business person's point of view, it's a bad business. So is there any way we can bring that amount down? You know, even with the new position that you're asking to, you hire, you're asking? Is there, some of the positions are necessary to hire? Can we figure out our needs versus wants? Like, can we figure out what we really needed and what we can wait to have it done next year or year after?
Thank you through the chair. So just, I wanted to reconfirm. So the wage increases in the budget are 2.5 million. The new positions are 2.6 million. So the majority, like, the, one of the biggest chunks of that new position is the six firefighters. So, you know, on that number, I'm, I'm going to pay, bring on a firefighter with a burden cost of, let's say, $90,000, and they're going to offset overtime costs of probably $150,000. So, you know, if I, if I take out, if I take out those firefighters, your overtime costs will increase. There's $800,000 worth of planning, new positions in there. If I don't hire them, you're probably refunding a couple of million dollars for the planning fees. So a big chunk of our positions that we're bringing on is to actually offset costs. So, you know, to me, those are, that's easy math. I bring on someone for $90,000 to offset $150,000 worth of overtime costs? I'm going to, I'm going to do that. The other positions that were hired, the, the next biggest one was forestry. And, you know, forestry's been kicked down the road probably for about a decade. We are not meeting our obligations to maintain the trees that we have. So yes, you can do it. You know, that's not, that's not an issue. It's just that service level goes down. And then the next biggest group was the IT to bring on. And that's going to create efficiencies down the road. You know, I do struggle with the fact that I can't do forecasting. I don't, I have a budget system that's done essentially in Excel spreadsheets. Like, you know, that's not how a $100 million organization, you know, should, should operate. So, and we can't continue to have these systems as we grow as, as an organization. So in those cases, you know, I, I think that there's payoff for that coming down the road. But the biggest hires are planning and fire, and those have actual savings attached to it. So yes, we're writing more checks out for payroll. But if we didn't do that, we'd just be writing a check someplace else. So that's the, you know, that is the, that, so we're, like, really, we're fairly thin on our service enhancements this year. The biggest payroll increases that happened were actually last year because of McBain and because of the exchange. Those were our biggest ones. But we took over McBain. Every time we walk into that building, that place is busy as hopping. And, you know, we need to staff that. I think, you know, it's, you know, I think if I ran a poll and said, can we open up McBain on Sundays? I think we'd get overwhelming support to say, open it up. But as soon as they open it up, it's going to cost us more money. So we're, we're not opening up on Sundays at McBain, and it's probably our busiest facility in the city. So, you know, staff hasn't asked to increase those type of service levels. Really, our service levels are either mandated because of Bill 109 and 23 or just to solve the fire, the overtime issue. Sorry for the long-winded answer, but, you know, we do scrub this. You know, we are prepared to look at, if we do have service level reductions, we will reduce positions. But we can't maintain the services without the people. That's, that's the big challenge. If I cut people, I'm going to cut services at some point in time.
Yeah, because the taxpayers, they think that we are just cutting all the services, right? So it's just somewhere to balance that. That's the whole idea. Thank you.
No, and I think to the counselor's point, you know, I think what you can say out of this budget, because the biggest service level reduction was the pool, the pool closures. Now, the one pool's got to close just for safety reasons, so let's park that one. But the only other real major service level reduction was the the only other real major service level reduction was the closure of one pool, and this council deferred it. So, you know, there hasn't been real service level reductions in this budget. So again, we're maintaining a high value. And I go back to the, I go back to the analysis of, you know, that $500,000 house is going to pay less and get more services than in St. Catharines, New Orleans. And if you want the services, you're going to have to pay for those services. I go back to, we're not Hogwarts. I don't have a magical shield that reduces costs in Niagara Falls. And, you know, I think the budget and the service levels that this council have chosen, you know, as a, as a resident, you should be proud of the level of services that you get here in the city of Niagara Falls. And we do it for a pretty reasonable rate.
Yeah, but as a, as a council level, you know, the inflation and interest rate hikes, and we don't, we don't have control over that. Only control we have is like the way we can, any way we can reduce a tax levy to make the life comfortable for our taxpayers, especially for the seniors, because, you know, $400, that's, it's going to go up, it's not going to cause, it's not going to affect lots to the young families, especially when both people are working. But if it's a senior, single senior, then if they have to pay for $500 extra, then do they get the medicine? Do they get the food? Or do they pay for the taxes? That's what I'm worrying about is the seniors and people who just can't afford to put food on the table. Those are the people we have to worry about, right? So.
And I agree with that. And, you know, and that's why I am a little bit passionate about, you know, and I know I burden my finance team a lot, but if we bring in another program, you know, that would target those seniors who are on guaranteed income supplement. If I can bring that in by the fall, because in past years, that grant never went out to the fall. And that's where the tax increase would come to the taxpayers. So if I can get finance, our team to work on that new program and work with the seniors committee and market it, we might be able to take a lot of that sting away from seniors and those on ODSP. Because I think, you know, if we can put a $250 grant program out there, you know, that would take away most of the increase. And they would be, they would receive a lot more benefit, frankly, than the existing program. So for those most vulnerable, that's why I like that strategy, because it helps out the most vulnerable. So I know I, I won't guarantee it. I'll bring back another report, but I'll, we'll, we'll be motivated to see if we can get that done by the fall.
And I think federal has a funding or grant that seniors can apply for up to $500 from the property tax reduction? Is it possible that we can have a little brochure goes there with the house assessment and seniors know what they can apply for? Okay, thank you.
Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For seniors that own a home, that's great. What about seniors that don't own a home? We have the water rebate. What other assistance is there for seniors that don't own a home?
Through the, through the chair, just the water rebate, which, and that, that applies to both homeowners and renters. Yep.
Correct. But if you're a renter, that's the only rebate that you have. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from counselors in regards to the actual operating budget or any expenditures in there? If not, I mean, I would think that, you know, instead of actually passing a motion today, because everything that we've done has been in principle. And I know that Ms. Clark has already updated her slide for us. So we can see that we've whittled it down to 7.4% right now. But instead of making a motion to move this, perhaps we can wait until next week. Maybe there'll be other ideas that come forward, either by staff or by council members, and then we can make a decision next week.
We'll certainly accept it to the council.
Okay. Counselors, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. CEO.
With that said, then, we move on to reports. And 6.1 is F 2023-08, Single Source Funding Application. And, I'm not sure, you, and Ms. Arlington, here we go.
Thank you, through the chair to council. This report is for approval of a single source procurement with Grantmatch. It's a funding application service in order to identify and maximize funding opportunities available for the city of Niagara Falls. As the C A O explained earlier tonight, this is a fee for service for successful applications only. There's no cost to unsuccessful applications. The city does retain control over which grants can be applied for. And certainly, the city can pursue grants without the assistance of this service provider. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Arlington? Counselor LaCoco?
If I don't have any questions, I'll put them, I'll move the motion. I know when you're writing grants, it is a very specific skill. I have written grants for nonprofits, for art organizations. It's a very specific skill, and it depends on what, what happens to be the, the desire for that year. It could be different the following year. It might be focused for this, or it might be focused for that. And it takes a specific skill. To me, this is just a, a normal thing for us to do. We don't have to pay unless we get it. And 10% with the percentages there, that's not as high as I have seen them. And I think it's a great asset to, to the city. I think we should do it, and I'll put that motion forward.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Strange. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Okay, next we have the ratification of in-camera. Mr. Mayor, you want the chair back? Okay. Next, we have the ratification of in-camera.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Council met earlier this afternoon in a closed session, and it was determined that there be a direction to staff on how to proceed with employee negotiations by adjusting the labor budget by a $100,000 reduction.
Okay. Yep. Motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. Need a motion for the bylaws to be given a first, second, and third reading. Did you have your hand up? Oh, wow. Counselor Thompson made the motion, seconded by Counselor Patel. Call the vote. All those in favor, motions carried. And a motion for adjournment. You again? Wow. Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Patel. All those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. We'll see everyone next week.